Hello, everybody.
Great.
Hey Greg.
Hello.
Okay, we've got one more minute. So I saw Judd was having computer problems. I hope he will make it on tonight.
Yeah, we might have to postpone that.
Some discussions, yeah.
Some discussions. That's too bad.
Is there a number that he can call in? I know that's awkward, but at least he can.
Yeah, of course. There is a number, yeah.
There is a number. Um, let's see.
But how does that work for us, though?
It just comes in as a, um, audio only.
Well, in a pinch, you can do that.
Right, or he could use his cellphone and, or, and watch the same way. Um.
Yes, he just emailed me for the Zoom link info, so let's get that to him. Can you stall, Jan?
Yep, oh, there he is.
Did he pop up?
Yep. So I guess we can admit everyone now. It is 7:30.
Yeah. Where's Bruce? Not here?
Oh.
Wait, I don't see him.
Hi, Judd.
Hi, I'm, today the goblins have been out. My computer has been like packing up all day, but I'm on. You can hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, people are still coming in.
Bruce is on his way.
All right, so perhaps I will start. Um. Hi, everyone. I'm Janet Anderson. I'm calling to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. The open meetings law changes enacted at the New York State budget enabled us to have this meeting by video conference, and the board agreed to do so at our April meeting. I expect our June meeting to be in person at 79 Bauton Street unless the emergency declaration, which now goes until before our meeting in June, is extended, in which case we would probably do video conference again as well. I will emphasize that no one is in at our in-person meeting location at 79 Bauton. This meeting is being recorded. Kirsten Conrad has confirmed that the YouTube feed is active and working, and that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. We intend to post a recording and a transcript of this meeting to the town website, and the Zoom video will also be available on the town's YouTube channel. Joining me on the Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are the members of the Planning Board, Charlene and Delicato, Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, and I believe, yes, Bruce and Bruce Thompson. We'd have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board, and we can vote on any matters that become before the board. Also, on the conference of the Planning Wetland Consultant, Jan Johansson and Council Judd Seibert, as well as the Planning Board Administration, sorry, Administrator Kirsten Conrad and CAC Chair John Lo. We do have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. These are the only times we expect to take public comments. I will describe the process before we begin the hearings in just a few minutes. And the public has joined muted. We ask that any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. As we go through this to ease the recording of our votes, I will poll board members individually. So with that, let's get started. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a decision on calendar number 56-05WP. This is the Rinaldi residence at 9 Northlake Circle, South Salem, New York, and this is a request for relaxation of a septic requirement, which is included in an existing wetland permit, and we considered this matter at our last meeting and asked for a resolution, which we, has been circulated, but perhaps, Jan, I can ask you to review it quickly.
Sure. The, the property owner had, had appeared at the last planning board meeting and presented its case for the elimination of the septic inspection requirement. This wetland permit dates back some years. It predates my tenure with the, with the town. The application, the wetland permit application was an administrative wetland permit that was issued by the wetland inspector at the time. It was for a, I believe, a 300 square foot addition to the house and a deck. The addition was really for a kitchen. There was no increase in bedroom count. Although there was a restriction placed on, on the permit that the applicant was to inspect the septic system once, once a year, since the issuance of that permit, and I believe the, the owner has been diligent in, you know, addressing that condition with, with having the septic pumped and inspected every year. Since that permit has been in place, the town amended its, its town code to require that all property owners within the town have their septics inspected on, every, once every five years. So at the last meeting, the, the board entertained the application, agreed with the applicant that the condition was no longer necessary, and requested that our office prepare a resolution that eliminates that condition going forward. That's before you tonight.
Okay, um, so I think it has been, as I said, distributed to the board to review, so I, if there aren't any questions, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
I so moved.
Okay, I think it was moved by Charlene and seconded by Jerome. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I will also say aye, so the motion carries. The resolution has been approved. Thank you, and I see Peter is on. Thank you, Peter.
No, thank you. Thank to all the members of the board for my consideration. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an extension of time request. This is calendar number 03-20PB and calendar number 37-20WP. This is for Gossip Brothers Nursery at 1202 Route 35, South Salem, New York, and this is the application for site development plan approval and wetland activity permit approval for an existing nursery, and this did expire on March 16th, 2022, and we did get a request for an extension before that date, and I believe, Michael, you're on for this?
Yes, I am. Good evening. My understanding is that this is still down with the Health Department, and that's what we're waiting on. So we're asking for a further extension.
Okay, I think typically, we have heard that the Department of Health is, is slow, obviously because of the pandemic. This is typically a six-month extension, and I would like, look for a motion to approve the, the this application, an extension to 91622.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Greg. Um, any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll poll the board. Um, Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the extension of time has been extended. Has been approved, and the, and the, the, the extension time has been approved. Okay. Um, the next item on our agenda is a matter I'm recused from, so I'll ask Jerome to handle it.
Yeah, the next item is calendar number 0812PB, the Petroselli Battaglizia Oscarita Road property, and it's a request for a 90-day extension of time to, to a resolution granted, granting primary, preliminary, final subdivision flat and negative deck under secret dated October 21st, 2014. Michael, I think you're representing.
Yeah, I, I am, and I, I had a discussion with Judd about this. I, I think there is a path to, to get this concluded, but it's going to take a little more time. But I think we've made some, some progress. I'll let Judd speak to it.
And now, I, I, I spoke with Michael. I, I have been speaking with Michael. I, I think there is. It's, keep in mind that this is a subdivision approval that was granted basically to recognize existing property rights between the property of Petroselli and the neighboring property owner. And it's a question of what can be prepared for purposes of filing with the county that will be acceptable to them, recognizing the approval that was adopted and, and, and granted by the board in 2014, so I think we're, we keep saying we're close, but I, I think another 90-day extension might do it. We may be back, but I think, I think we're close.
Okay, so we need a motion then for a 90-day extension?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Greg, seconded by Charlene. Poll board, and it's any discussion before we go? If none, I'll poll the board. Charlene? So I, uh, glad, uh.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I say aye as well, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, back to you.
Excellent.
Okay, and so obviously I abstain on that one. Um, okay, the next, next we have some public hearings, so let me start with the, the ground rules sort of, um, public hearings. The purpose of a public hearing is really for the board to hear the concerns and comments of the public. The comments should be addressed to the planning board, not to the applicant. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue. In general, the board will not directly respond to comments at the public hearing, although we will correct errors if we, if we recognize them at that moment. The board will take public in, input into consideration as we continue to review the matter before us. Now, members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborogov.com, and we did invite public comments by email before the meeting. We'll now open it up to people to speak. To speak at the hearing, please raise your Zoom hand by clicking on the raised hand icon, which is at the bottom of the screen. If you are on a phone, you can press star nine, and that will effectively raise your hand. We will ask speakers to give their name and address, and we do ask that the comments be kept short, and if your comments are substantially the same as a prior, prior person, please, you know, consider lowering your hand. The format for a public hearing, I'll give a brief introduction to the application. The applicant will give a, again, a brief summary of the project. The planning board advisors will review their comments. We'll have the public comment period and then a discussion by the planning board. So the first item on, our first public hearing on our agenda is calendar number 03-22PB, calendar number 09-22SW. This is for the Arbor Hills Water System on Bundage Drive in Goldens Bridge, New York. This is an application for the construction of a water treatment facility, and I believe I saw the applicant. Okay.
Um, can you guys see my screen?
We can.
Okay.
Could you just give your name again for the record here?
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, my name is Sean Peters from H2M Architects and Engineers. Uh, also joining me on the call today is Christopher Peters from Liberty Utilities. So as Chairperson Anderson mentioned, I just want to give a very brief background on the project. So this site is an existing water supply and treatment facility. It services the Arbor Hills subdivision. Um, it's a 4.6 acre parcel in the R2A zoning district. It services about 210 people through 67 service connections. So what the project is looking to do is to provide a new water treatment building on the site. The location of the building itself was selected in a location that would be further away from existing residencies that are adjacent to the parcel. As you can see over here, this is where the existing treatment building is, and this is where the new building is located. The, uh, the project itself is in a fairly wooded area, and it abuts Bundage Drive and Waukebuck Road. As far as improvements on the site itself, uh, we have the 1680 square foot treatment building. Fenced-in area will provide security around the site. There are two 8,000 gallon water storage tanks that are proposed on the site. Those are used as part of the water treatment process. As far as other improvements, it's very limited. Um, there's going to be some resurfacing of the asphalt pavement on the site, as well as a small underground detention center, uh, which is going to provide attenuation of the 25-year storm. For the benefit of those on the call, uh, the site is typically unmanned, um, and we don't anticipate, uh, this site generating, um, any additional traffic as part of this project. Typically, Liberty Utilities will stop at the site one to two times a day, um, to check on operations and make sure that everything is, is running okay. The lighting on the site is proposed on all four sides of the building, um, for operation and security reasons. However, as noted by, uh, Callard Sessions, uh, the town's consultant, those lights will have glare shields and will also be on motion detect. So, you know, the majority of the time, you won't be seeing any lights on these buildings. There's a few photos that I just wanted to show. Um, this is the site entrance. As you can see, the project site is very wooded. Um, we have a few pine trees lining the entrance to the site. The new building is located generally in this area, um, so it is well screened. This is another view from the intersection of Waukebuck and Sullivan Road. You can see there's a lot of new vegetation in that area, um, which provides adequate screening. The existing site has a, as we talked about before, is a small treatment building, um, and this area over here is where the new building is proposed. As you can see, it's predominantly cleared, um, so there will be, um, a minimal amount of tree clearing proposed as part of this project. Uh, if the board has any questions at this time or, or wants me to further clarify anything, uh, please just let me know.
I think that's great. Thank you, Sean. Um, Jan, did you want to, I, I don't think you had an extensive memo on this, but do you want to offer any comments?
We, we did not have a memo on this, uh, application, or we, we had prior memos that were satisfied. So, uh, no further comment on our end for this particular application.
Okay, um, I'm looking for, are there any members of the public who have any comments or questions about this particular application? Okay, I don't see any, so, um, perhaps if you could stop screen sharing, we could see the board. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Everybody wants, okay, I think Jerome got there first, and maybe Bruce second, Bruce seconded it? Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, I'll, I'll poll the board again. Um, Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye, so the public hearing is closed. We did have a, um, resolution on this, and Jan, um, sorry, first I should say that the resolution has been distributed to the planning board members. So Jan, do you want to quickly go through that?
Or this is a, a resolution for site, uh, development plan approval and a stormwater permit for an upgrade to a water treatment system for, uh, Arbor Hills, located on Bundage Drive on a 4.63 acre property in the R2 zoning district. The system, uh, currently serves 67 customers. Uh, it is being upgraded through the Westchester County Department of Health. There are no wetland or wetland buffer impacts. There's no wetland permit, uh, involved here. Limits of disturbance slightly exceed 5,000 square feet, so there's a town stormwater permit. And the applicant will be required to file, uh, Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges from construction activity. The applicant is mitigating stormwater runoff with a stormwater detention system. Uh, the project has been referred to the building inspector. Uh, you have a memo from the building inspector identifying zoning conformance. It's a type-two action under SECRE, and as I stated earlier, there, our office has no further comments.
Okay, um, I just noticed that there is a, uh, question that came in through the chat from Jane Bendor that asked, how will cost be, um, recovered? That's not, um, typically an issue for the planning board, but perhaps the applicant can address that?
Yeah, so I, I can speak to it at a high level. Um, obviously, as, um, Chairperson Anderson mentioned, you know, this isn't really something that typically pertains to, um, the planning board's purview, but, uh, you know, what I will say is that, um, with a, with a, um, a provider such as Liberty Utilities, um, typically what happens is that these costs are distributed over a larger base, um, and I think this is a benefit actually to the Arbor Hills subdivision as a, as opposed to their previous provider, um, which was a smaller, uh, system. I believe it was back in 2012, or 2017, when Liberty Utilities took over. Before it was that, it was Arbor Hills subdivision, uh, Arbor Hills Water Works. So I believe that those costs would be spread over a larger base, as opposed to being, uh, direct impact to residents, so, I, I see that as a benefit, um, when you're working with a company like Liberty Utilities, but other than that, I, I really don't have too much more information, uh, on that.
Okay, thank you.
And Jan, I, yeah, I would, I would just add that the, the question of, of cost and rate is outside of the board's jurisdiction. As a water utility, this is something that would be addressed in a rate filing with the, uh, New York State PSC.
Yes, thank you, Judd. Um, I do see, John, you have your hand up?
On mute here. Yeah, we just noticed on the drawings that there was a large maple that was like on the edge of the road, that, that, I think it was 26-inch. And the comment we had in the CAC is we'd like to have that preserved if at all possible, if there could be a slight modification to the road.
Can I actually speak to that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so, John, um, we did receive that comment. Um, that was for the, uh, the Indian Hill system, and, and we have no objection to that for the Indian Hills, uh, project. We'll, we will protect that tree.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, um, but we are discussing right now the Arbor Hills, and we have, and, and we have a, um, a, uh, resolution that's been briefly described by, um, Jan, so I would look for a motion to approve that resolution. Okay, Bruce, um, looks like you're moving, and Charlene, that looked like a second. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the resolution has been approved. Thank you. And we will move on to our next public hearing, and this is, um, calendar number 09-22PB, calendar number 17-22WP. Calendar number 10-22SW. This is for the Indian Hills Water System at Apache Circle, Katona, New York. This is the application for the construction of a water treatment facility and, um, three, possibly three new wells. Um, and again, I believe, Sean, you've, you've got this. So again, let me just, um, the format will be the brief introduction to the application, which I just gave, a summary of the project, um, any comments, and then the public comment period, and then the planning board will discuss it. So take it away, Sean.
Thank you very much. Um, so, so very similar, and actually, let me go up to this, this first photo. So very similar to Arbor Hills, um, this site is also looking to install a new, uh, water treatment building. Um, the site is a 8.2 acre parcel in the R2A zoning district. Um, this services the Indian Hills subdivision, which consists of about 360 people through 80 service connections. In addition, on this, on this site, um, there is a need for, uh, water storage and water supply as well. As Chairperson Anderson mentioned, we are looking into, um, three potential test well locations, uh, and the purpose of that is to provide a redundant water supply, um, that would meet regulatory requirements. That would serve as a backup water supply for, for example, you know, there was a needed repair or maintenance on one of the existing wells. Just, just to show those locations over here, um, those three locations are TW5, TW6, and TW7. Those locations have been sent to the DOH for their confirmation. Our, our intent is to start with TW7, which would be the furthest away from the wetlands and environmentally sensitive area. Uh, if everything goes well with testing on that location, then we wouldn't need to proceed to TW5 and TW6. However, um, in the event that we do need to perform testing in those locations, those locations will be outside of any wetland disturbance. Um, as far as site improvements up by the building, um, we are also proposing a 34,600 gallon water storage tank. I know, I know this sounds like a large number, but actually the tank is only 15 feet high. So it's not, it's not very tall. It's actually smaller than the building. Um, we're also proposing a fenced-in area for security purposes and to protect that water supply area, um, a gravel turnaround area and a underground detention, um, system, which will attenuate the 25-year storm. I did have a few photos for the benefit of those on the call that may not have seen them before. This is the site entrance in photo two. As you can see, uh, the site is also fairly wooded and set back off of the main road. Photo number one shows the existing treatment building, an emergency generator, um, and the general layout of the area. Uh, the new, uh, water storage tank and, uh, treatment building will be located in this general area. Uh, the location was selected because, um, it reduces tree clearing. A lot of this area is shrubs and smaller vegetation. We are in receipt of comments from the building inspector, who noted this site is zoning compliant and referred to the Coward Sessions memo. We also received comments from the CAC, which is what I believe John was referencing before, regarding that 26-inch maple, that specimen tree. Um, we have no objection to protecting that. That will be noted on the plans. Um, we also received, uh, Coward Sessions memo. Uh, we have no objections to it, but I did have two items that I just wanted to clarify with Jan if I could. The first one being the, uh, wetland mitigation plan. I know that, uh, maybe it's a little unclear, but that is discussed on, uh, C100. Jan, I don't know if you were looking for a separate wetland mitigation plan, if that's typical, uh, if we should break this out into a different sheet. Uh, what we're showing here is, is, um, seeding a wetland seed mix for all those disturbed areas for the well access, and then also a conservation easement area. So I can certainly break that out into a separate sheet if that's what you're looking for. I just want to make sure that I understand the comment.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be helpful. I'd like to understand, uh, the, the seed mixes in a little bit more detail, and, um, obviously the conservation area will need to see limits on that and, and description of activities that are, are prohibited in that area.
Okay, yeah, so we can break that out into a sheet to provide a little bit more detail. The only other question I had, uh, Jan, was just, um, where we talk about widening and resurfacing of the driveway. That currently isn't proposed as part of this project, and I didn't know if it was something that you were noting as something we needed to do, or you were kind of suggesting that if we were, we need to show details for that.
Kind of a combination of of the two, to the extent that you have pavement that needs to be restored. We want to see like a restoration detail. But imagine as you get up closer to the facility, you'll be repaving that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the pavement is in good condition, but we have no objection to showing a detail for that and identifying that, you know, if there's damaged pavement or areas that need to be repaired and kind of call out that detail.
Yeah, if you have like maybe a pavement restoration detail would be satisfactory.
Okay. All right. So other than that, I didn't have any, I didn't have any other comments. Like I said, we have no objection to addressing these comments that we received from Coward Sessions. So if the board has any questions at this time, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I'm gonna hold my comment because it's not a question till a little bit later, but maybe I'll ask Jan to review. We've already addressed some of the items in your memo. Perhaps you can highlight if there's something else that needs addressing.
Sure. You know, the main difference between this project and the other that was just discussed is the need for wetland permits. The facility is located within the town wetland buffer. We have some crossings with the with the proposed water works. This wetland is also regulated by the DC, so the applicant will require Article 24 freshwater wetland permit from the DC. The the plan itself is very kind of consistent in terms of the other project, the mitigation strategies for stormwater are consistent. We wanted a little bit more information on the wetland mitigation plan and happy to speak with Sean offline on exactly what's needed to reach the one to one mitigation requirement. We had some just questions or concerns about the stormwater detention structure that's proposed under underground. They did have some they did encounter some some groundwater, evidence of groundwater during the soil testing. So some concerns about how that that system would be protected from from groundwater and potential floating of the system. That was real, I mean, we had a couple odds and ends, but those were the the main comments, a little couple comments on the stormwater mitigation system and flushing out the wetland mitigation plan.
Okay, I will thank you. I will now open this up again to any public comments and if the if anyone from the public would like to make a comment, you can raise your Zoom hand and we'll call on you. While that's, perhaps while that's happening, I will make a comment, and that is that because there are wetlands relatively close to where you're going to be putting in the the wells and this new activity. I I think I would really like to see some, perhaps some shrubs or something that feels a little more permanent than than a seed mix. I I leave that to Jan's discretion, but I do think that as part of getting to the one to one mitigation, if there is some way you can you know, the whole idea is to protect the, as you well know, to protect the wetlands from disturbance and ongoing activities. So perhaps something a little more robust than than just a seed mix would be something I'd like to see, but but I'll you know, I defer to Jan's expertise on this. All right, again, I don't see any member of the public that has raised their hand on this. So I guess I would look for, perhaps you could stop screen sharing, Sean?
No problem.
And I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Jerome. Have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Greg. Any further discussion? I will poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes, aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye, so the public hearing is is closed. I think we did ask Jan to start a resolution on this. I would say that if there is a sort of if Jan, if you become comfortable with a a mitigation plan and some of the minor corrections, I guess we'd look to have that for the next meeting.
Happy to have that prepared for the next meeting and Sean, if we could set up a meeting between now and then just to go over the mitigation plan. That'd be great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, and so we'd look for that resubmission, you know, to have that discussion so we could go forward or on the on the resolution. Any other discussion on this before we move on? Yes, Bruce?
I'm curious about something that you said, and I understand why on the shrub versus the the seed mix. I'm curious about which solution is a better control of invasives if you're mowing a seed mix, say, once a year or maybe even twice. I'm not familiar with how often they mow it, but some of these things, if they're not well, anything if it isn't maintained, you're going to get an infestation of invasives.
Yes, I I think that's one of the reasons I like to see some shrubs, but I again, I'll defer to it. It somewhat depends on which shrubs are planted, how much ground disturbance there is. And again, I'll defer to Jan on on further comments on that.
Yeah, I think a lot has to do, you know, these are fairly narrow trenches for the, you know, the wells and the water lines. Obviously, the disturbance up by the facility itself and the driveway is more open. But I think with regards to invasive species, a lot has to do with what's around it and and the extent of kind of canopy and shading that you have. It's if it's a wide opened area and you you cut a big swath in there and just throw down some seed mix, you're probably not going to be very successful. Try to try to have some shade that that really prevents some of that from taking off. So it's unique project specific. We want to take a look at the area and try to work with Sean to develop the right plan. I would suggest, and they obviously need to maintain these areas, right? So you can't cut this line and then plant it out with shrubs. They're going to need to get back to that well periodically, you know, for maintenance. So on projects like these, we have suggested you know, perennials or or a seed mix so that, you know, you can access them and they just become kind of a naturalized path. So I don't really have any objections to that, provided they expect the right seed mix and successful.
Yeah. That's actually good. Thank you, Jan, because obviously they do need to continue to have access to the well site, so.
And hopefully, you know, they're kind of showing you the worst case scenario by all these different test wells. Sean mentioned, hopefully, they they drill the first one, they they hit money and it's in the end of the day.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. Yes, so as as I indicated, if the mitigation plan is acceptable to you, I that you're really the expert in this. Okay, so I think we're done with this matter now, Harry, unless anyone has any other questions?
I just wanted to point that, and I it's I didn't pick up on the conservation area, but you know, I don't know that that's really necessary, and I would hate to get into a situation where you may need that area in the future, and there's some restriction in the way that was just to satisfy mitigation requirement. I think you can get to where you need to be without that imposing that such a restriction on a parcel like this that's really meant for utility.
Okay, no, I think I think we can work on that, Jan, and I'll I'll reach out to you about a meeting and and we can improve that plan.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that it's unlikely that the kind of thing that a conservation easement would typically protect against would be would be proposed for this particular parcel. So good catch, Jan. Okay. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 05-22 PB. This is the Borough Cafe, H73 Route 35, Cross River, New York. This is an application for a change of use from office to a restaurant and yoga studio. Okay, so I'm still seeing a screen, a shared screen. Did he leave without?
Can you hear me, Stephen Helms with the Helm's Group Architects?
Ah, yes, hi, Stephen.
Hi, I'm going to try to share my screen if I can now. I'm on tonight with my clients, Skaz Getchak and John Swartzbaker.
Hello.
How we doing, guys?
I'm gonna Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, just to give a little recap. This is, site is located at the corner of Route 35 and North Salem Road. It's a little over a half acre. It's 0.6 acres. And it's an existing three story building with a basement and has been used for offices for quite a few years, and we'd like to convert the first floor in the first floor offices into a cafe and the second floor offices into a yoga studio. There's no change in footprint with this application other than ADA compliant handicap ramp in the front or in this south side here and a deck at grade level facing Route 35. That's the extent of the site work. Parking and circulation is to remain as is. We are seeking a site development plan approval for this project as well as a special use permit for the outdoor seating for seasonal outdoor seating with a caveat that it would be a maximum of 12 people outside, 24 inside. Again, that's seasonal. So it's a 36 person maximum proceeding in this establishment. We were at the ARB Accart last week. We did obtain approval for from our submission. They had some comments on maybe substituting some other type of bushes instead of the boxwoods. We took that under advisement. And we do have to go back to Accart for signage. However, the signs are going to remain in the exact two spots which are located here and here. But we'll submit that the coloring and so forth, but the signboards will stay.
Stephen, perhaps Steve, perhaps you could speak up a little. We're getting some background noise and thank you.
We did submit this application to the Health Department in April, and we are anxiously awaiting. I've been in contact with people at the Health Department on this application. Hoping to get some feedback the end of this week. Hoping I would have something for today. But a little backed up and they did receive everything and they're reviewing it. Let's see what else. Just while I bring to attention this building conforms to wall setbacks. We're not increasing the building coverage or the impervious site on this with respect to elevations. We're going to replace the siding and replace the windows, and the roof is going to remain. It's pretty much my application through the plans here for the public. This drawing number two represents the floor plans. Drawing on the left, top left is the existing office layout, and the drawing on the right, which is depicted in colors, is the cafe. And we have unisex bathrooms up here. And then on the second floor, we have a yoga studio, which is here, and we're taking out part of the third floor to maximize the headroom and the second floor yoga studio. Landscape plan was submitted to your board last go around. Subsequent to that, they did plant a doorway spruce, I believe, here. And that's an existing site plan drawing that was asked for. This is sort of a rendition of the exterior with the vertical siding, dark windows, and nice folding doors here to gain access in and out of from the cafe out to the deck. But the massing and all that stays as it is. Reference fixture down on the lower here is how it sits today. This is an inspiration picture of the folding doors. This is just another view off North Salem Road in this area here. There was a deck drawing prepared and a sign detail that was asked for. Skaz and John, would you like to add anything to this presentation at this time?
No, I think that was that was it.
Pretty much nailed it. We're really excited. And we're looking forward to this.
I must say, again, this is a permitted use in this zone district. I need to stress that. Just for the record there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and so good. So the next thing is to ask I don't know, Jan, if there was any other comments that you had to give at this point?
No, our comments were were addressed with the last submission. As Stephen indicated, we the Health Department is something that we'd like to see, although the we made that a condition of the of the resolution if the if the planning board acts on that. The change of use requires Health Department approval.
Okay, so I will now open this up to the the public for comments. And again, to make a comment, please raise your Zoom hand by clicking on that. And if you are on the phone, you can hit star nine to sort of virtually raise your hand, and I would ask people again to be to be succinct and to let us know your concerns. And so I do see one hand up, then so I'll ask Glenn to unmute yourself and and begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Glenn DeFaber, Cross River resident for many years. When I heard that these guys were putting in a cafe, I couldn't believe how lucky I was to last this long, not to have a place where you can go other than Dunkin' Donuts. It's a perfect location. It's low impact. It's not a 7-Eleven. And I think it will enhance our community to where I think it is and where it's going to go. And it's great to have young guys who grew up in town who have a stake in our community that want to see it get better and grow for their children and for my grandchildren. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. The next the next hand I see up is Jerry. Please, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jerry Poznak, and I'm a resident at 23 Mark Mead Road, and my wife and I moved here in 2001. Longtime Cross River residents and also the residents who are probably closest to this application. I'd love to see growth in the community, but I do have a couple of concerns and I do have a couple of questions, so I'll keep it brief. As one, my concern is that part of the application and in the business plan, there was an indication that part of the target demographics was going to be the students of the high school and middle school. As someone who likes to walk, I mean, it's treacherous trying to cross Route 35 at that intersection. There are no crosswalks. Typically, traffic does not adhere to the supposed speed limit, and nobody really stops at the stoplight and then just makes the right hand turn. So one concern is that our middle school students are going to be coming over across the street. Will the planning board require a traffic study to see if it's going to be a dangerous intersection? My second question to the planning board is that the gentleman, Mrs. Swartzbaker and Mr. Skaggs came into the property that we own, my wife and I own, and removed native trees that were in good not diseased at all without our permission and took down a series of trees, at least five or six trees. One which would have straddled the property line between our property and their property was one that actually was on the rock wall. And that the survey showed that was, you know, completely divided by the two properties. They subsequently made amends by they subsequently uh made amends by uh planting some non-native species trees to 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 address our concerns of the lack of of, you know, now we have uh no uh shading and also, you know, now we're seeing Route thirty-five where we didn't see it before. You know, the Mr. Skaggs, when I asked him questions about this, why they came onto our property, he he said that Lewisboro has in the tree ordinance that a neighbor can come onto another neighbor's property within a hundred feet of a foundation and cut down a tree without asking permission. I reviewed the ordinance and I couldn't find anything like that in the ordinance. So my question to the planning board, which can be addressed, is is there, is ten neighbors go onto another one's property and just cut down trees? And these are trees that were native trees. Some of them were on the larger size. I do have video. I do have images of the trees that were taken down. And I think that at the least, the neighborly thing would have been to do was to knock on my door and ask permission to do so. So I mean, my major concerns are the trees that were taken down and the lack of transparency. I know that they also mentioned, uh, the gentleman who mentioned earlier before about the roof, uh, that the roof was going to remain the same, but Mr. Skag can mention the reason why they wanted to take the trees down was to put solar on the roof, which I love solar. But it seems more like the plans that were submitted for the landscaping plans that they needed to add in some sort of a buffer. So, and this was done before anything was approved. So just bring it to your attention. Those are my concerns. I love growth in the town. But I also like honesty from the people who are going to be uh, you know, uh, doing this kind of work. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will say I am not an expert in in the town code, but I do not believe it was ever the intent of the code to allow people to go onto other people's property. Um, I that I think becomes a matter that is um perhaps I'll let Judd address, but thank you.
I uh, our 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 town code provides no provision that allows one neighbor to cross onto another neighbor's property. You know, for purposes of tree removal, um, you know, the the issue of whether that occurred and what the ramifications of that removal, you know, what, you know, what what those are uh is not something that this board can address. We can only address the application that's before us. That's uh more a matter of um, you know, the assertion of your property rights and claims of trespass against a neighboring property owner. Um, but um, you know, in terms of what the town code does or doesn't countenance, uh, no, I I I'm unaware and do not believe the town code provides for that type of uh off-premises activity at all.
And I I do believe that there is a lot of um existing um precedent that talks about the the um issues of one neighbor removing another person's tree. I would certainly say I favor native plantings over non-native. Um, the second question about um a traffic study, I think we'll discuss um a little bit more later. The um, so I will go to the next person whose hand is raised is Tim Collins.
Hi, how are you? Um, my name is Tim Collins. Um, I live at twenty of Villarreal Circle in North Salem, New York. I'm a John Jay High School graduate and also, you know, coached on the fields at John Jay. Um, in regards to the application, this is an absolute great opportunity for growth in our community and also an absolute excellent opportunity for jobs. Um, we are in a situation where in our economy, jobs are needed. This is a great situation for high school kids to be able to have a job after school and for other members of our community to go to and work and make our community better. In regards to the traffic situation, I lived in this town all my life. There was a time where there was no light at that intersection. So there's a light there now, and it should not be an issue. As far as the 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 property ownership, that's that's, as you guys said, that's a situation for um someone else to handle. But I just want to say that it will bring job growth to our community, and these two guys bring so much back to our community. Another business owned by them would be phenomenal for this area. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, thank you. I don't see any other hands raised at the moment. Again, if someone would like to comment, you can raise your zoom hand. Uh, Pete, go ahead. You have to unmute Pete.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Peter Lorenzini. I live at eighty-one Hemlock Road over in South Salem. Um, I just wanted to mention that I think this is a phenomenal idea. Um, we need something like this in our town because right now, I mean, reality is I I take my kids and I go over to Ridgefield to uh do these kind of things. Um, I think this place would benefit the community, would benefit the kids. And you know, I I I really, really like to see this get approved. Um, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, perhaps um, uh, if you could stop screen sharing, we could see each other. Um, and I'm gonna continue to say that if someone wants to um to speak again, we have received um a couple of comment letters. Um, but I think that the issues that we've heard today are ones about um safety, um, perhaps access and um and traffic. Um, I would say that I am concerned. I I agree with the the concerns about um about the street crossings there. They're very, the the street crossing is not easy. Um, and but I think it's also out of not only the planning board control to some extent, it's also out of the control of the town because it is a state road. Um, I would like to ask and ask for some clarification on the hours. Um, I I believe verbally we heard that the hours were six AM to four PM, but I don't know. Um, it was not part of the business plan. So perhaps um the applicants can can expand on that a little.
Skaz or John, can you address that?
Yeah, we're, it's either gonna be six AM to four or six thirty to four thirty, but no later than four thirty. We're kind of just trying to figure out where we can catch that in the traffic. Um, so just to kind of butt in, um, I know you guys are worried about, you know, kids coming over, but I don't think kids have seven dollars to spend on a cappuccino.
Yeah, this, I, I feel like they're, that's priced out. You know, we close right after school. Um, you know, our market is not
Not the kids.
For this, this is not that.
Um, we're really trying to build a place for adults, for our community to kind of get together. Um, so you know, I know Baccio's next door did a massive renovation. Um, I don't think a traffic study was asked for there, and they're open longer than we are. Um, I'm flattered that you guys think we're going to be very successful.
Yes, that is very
Very flattered.
Very nice to hear.
Um, but I think this is being made into a bigger deal than it is. Um, the simple cafe, we're offsetting a couple yoga classes, maybe four or five, seven at the most week on a weekly basis. Um, and that's about it. Um, nothing, you know, like
Yeah, yeah, I think everyone's getting excited about it. Um, and we need to think about like what it actually is. It's a coffee house. This is not a, you know, huge restaurant. Cars flying in and out. So that's just not what's realistic. It's not gonna happen.
Okay, um, I do see a couple more hands up, so I would ask Patty to unmute. Oh, you're already unmuted. Come on and talk.
Hi, um, my name's Patty Hinkley, and I've been a resident for twenty years. And um, as a business person myself, uh, where I do a lot of meetings um at cafes and restaurants and um, and uh, you know, places like that, I often find myself in hayfields out in North Salem or the reading room in Katona, and I would much rather meet clients or do business from somewhere local. And I think this place sounds like just the ideal spot for, again, more local business to happen and to support what is going to be an amazing addition to our awesome little town.
Great, thank you. Could you give us your address? Sorry, Patty.
Sure. Butternut Lane, Katona.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and Lisa Miller, could you unmute yourself? And go ahead. Nope, you're still muted. There you go. I'm sorry, we're not hearing you still. Um, make sure you haven't muted the mic somehow. Now you're muted again. Okay, um, I don't know how to help. There's, there might be a little microphone on your computer that has a red button or a red light that maybe you can hit that. And if that's lit, it's keeping you from speaking.
Yeah, try now. It looks like it's off.
No. I am sorry. So we do have, um, we do have a memo that I believe came from the same Lisa Miller. Um, and so we have we have uh circulated it among the the board members. Um, yeah, and I, try again. Can't hear you. Okay, so um, I think the the major issue again was um was some concern over traffic. Um, I just put it aside. Um, and um, I think I think um a curfew on the use of the outdoor deck. But if the whole business closes at four thirty, um, I don't think a curfew on the outside deck needs to be added. Um, that would be my view, but I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for board comments. Okay, I'm really sorry, Patty. I don't, I'm sorry. Uh, Lisa, I don't know how to help you get to be heard. Um, okay, is there any, any other comments or anybody have any suggestions on how to help Lisa? Okay, um, then I will open it up, I think, now to the board for any, any comments that you might have on this.
Yeah. Yeah, Lisa could go out and come in again. Why don't you sign out and come in again, Lisa? Try it again. Uh, my comment is, uh, well, first of all, uh, to be in agreement with those that have uh spoken about the benefit of a project like this to the community, and I would agree that uh, you know, it would be a wonderful place. I know people travel to Ridgefield and Katona to have their cafe and have cafe meetings. Um, there is a potential, though, for um high school kids that come out. I see them go to Greenway. They flood in there between two thirty and three thirty, and uh surely they'll be tempted to come across. And there is a lot of affluence in this town. I can't deny that. That they would be able to afford those prices that that were discussed. Uh, and I do think it's not just the traffic light that I'm concerned about because that that may be the least of the problems, but it's true, it's the uh travel from the high school to that crossing. Uh, there are no sidewalks. It would be mean walking uh across, within Route one twenty-one, North Salem Road, uh, crossing the entrance to the shopping center, which in itself is not uh a safe thing. So I'm wondering if uh we moved ahead here for approval, uh, if we could have a review wrote into the approval, say a two-year review, uh, and we know from experience how many kids across are doing that trip, uh, what what the problems are. And in the interim, uh, look into, I know Dan Walsh has been for years now talking about safe streets and uh
Rome. So I spoke to Tony Gonclav, town supervisor. And um, he's lined up a bunch of business owners, like Mirage, who owns the plaza next door, and he's pushing for sidewalks and crosswalks. I just want to get this straight. We have no issue with that. The only issue is we're not going to create a sidewalk if we have nothing to connect to.
No, listen, I, uh, it's not your issue. It's not your issue. But if it is an issue, it's the responsibility of the planning board to make sure, to make sure that safety is uh is a factor. You know, if somebody wanted to put a, uh, you know, uh, something that that did not require or attempt, it wasn't an attractive or tempting um place to go to, it wouldn't be an issue.
So what do you guys recommend? You, you, should we pressure the state? Like, I'm kind of confused on what we can
Hear, hear me out here. You, I mean, you cut me off just a moment ago.
Sorry.
We have had, we have had instances in the past uh where, for instance, for instance, a place worship that I know uh was uh as a, had to get a special permit uh because they were putting up um facilities for high holidays, let's say, when the traffic was going to be uh more expensive than normal. And it wasn't sure about how the parking would work, whether there'd be uh any dangerous situation on the roads, et cetera. And uh, what the planning board at that did at that time, this goes back to, you know, uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, is they built in a uh, a uh, test period or they said it would be a review of the of the approval after a ten-year period, a two-year period. And uh obviously, there's a lot of money invested in in building it. And at that time, if something were uh missed, it would be difficult to say, well, I'm sorry, we're pulling your permit. But it's something to consider that we need to both. Uh, if you're saying it will not be an attraction to high school students, somebody else said there'd be students that might be working there. But uh, if it's only automobile access, that's not a big issue. But uh, if it's pedestrian access, which by the way is a lot of what you see in the access to coffee shops in Katona and in Ridgefield, then I think that we might have a safety issue in uh the fact that there are no sidewalks and and a difficult crossing. But other than that, it's a great project.
Yeah, so I think I remember um what you are referencing, and it was a a special permit renewable after I think it was a couple of years, and that allowed um us to look at any kind of conditions that might be um appropriate to um, I think we actually had conditions in there that we removed, like counting the number of cars and so forth. So after two years, we were able to reduce that. So that might be a a way to see if if at that point, there's something um that has changed in the environment that we could could deal with. Um, I see that um, Lisa got back on, but meanwhile, we have another hand. Um, George, do you want to uh unmute yourself and go ahead?
Yeah, um, hi, my name is George Eggleston, and I live on Mark Mead Road. I can boom my video, I guess, and you can. There I am. Um, I live on Mark Mead Road, uh, which intersects uh North Salem Road. Uh, so we run parallel to thirty-five. And um, I just had a couple of comments. One, you mentioned earlier that there was some Health Department approval required. Can you just explain what that was? It might relate to the question I have about the septic.
So the Health Department, this is Steven Helms, Health Department approval for the change of use. Again, this building for the yoga studio does not have a shower. It's a, it's a bath, it's a toilet, um, and and it's lavatory and sinks on the first floor. So there's no shower in the building. And um, it's based on um water usage for the for the use. And uh, we calculated that, and uh there's a thousand gallon septic tank.
And we calculated that, and there's a thousand gallon septic tank, there's fields, we have documentation on that. That was all submitted to the Health Department, along with our calculations, and they're reviewing it as we speak. So they're going to come back with their comments.
Okay, so specifically, the question I had was whether or not the Health Department was reviewing the adequacy of the size of the septic system.
Yeah, they, that, that's The clearances on our site plan, but they're actively reviewing it now, yes sir.
Okay, okay, thank you. And a, a small thing, but I noticed somewhere on the plans that there was a washing machine that was not hooked up to the septic system, and I wondered where that water was going.
Guys, or John, do you know?
There shouldn't be any washing machines there.
Maybe I'm mistaken, I thought I saw that.
There's no kitchen here, it's more grabbing-go style, so I
Not a commercial kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about the washing machine.
All right, okay.
Perhaps it's a dishwasher?
It's grabbing-go style, you know, all biodegradable cups, plate, you know, like, there's not really a sit and grab type play, I mean, sit and eat, like fine dine, so we won't be having silverware.
Okay, all right, I, I just, I'm sure you know better than I, I just thought I had seen some reference to that. My other question, I mean, traffic, obviously, everybody talks about, and there's not much anybody can do, but I was, when I looked at the, the property layout, I believe, and I was at the last meeting, it was a brief conversation, there's egress on the North Salem Road, both in and out from the property and the parking area, as well as an existing driveway, I'll call it, on the north side of the property that exits onto 35. And I believe that is a single lane road. So I'm just raising a question as to traffic pattern. And what happens if people are coming off of 35 into that single lane road, and there's already a car there waiting to exit? So I'm just bringing up that traffic pattern issue through the property that might be a future issue.
That driveway widens up, that widens up before you come out to 35. And that came up in a previous planning board meeting, so the consensus was to keep the traffic flow the way it is now. But you can come in and there's, it's wide enough to have two cars go by. Maybe not the first 15 feet, but it does widen out, allow that.
So there'll be both entering and exiting from that driveway and the one on North Salem Road? Okay, all right, I'll leave that to the planning board to look at.
What is it currently?
Just both ways, just normal.
Both ways.
Okay.
I mean, maybe another thought was on the speed limit through that section, like they do at schools, maybe there can be a sign that reduce speed even when it's a green light, not to exceed 25 or 30, that would maybe something the state could look at, I'm not a DOT official, but it could be looked into, just to slow down the cars, but the traffic light should do its job.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep this from becoming a dialogue between
Yeah, I just, I just have one more question, how's that?
Okay, go ahead.
Let me see if I remember it now. Now it just dropped completely out of my mind, I apologize, so I won't waste your time. Thank you very much, though, for allowing me to speak.
Okay, and I think so I do think we should think maybe about the, I think there will be more traffic probably at this with this use than with the office use. So maybe the that would be another thing to, to look at, because I, because I do think this is going to be successful, I do think this is going to have a probably more traffic than the, than the office, current office building has. So Lisa, I know you're back on, do you want to try again? I don't see her. Go ahead and speak. Nope, we're not hearing you, okay. So, I guess without any more not seeing any more comments, I guess I would look for a motion to close the public hearing?
Tom needs to get a hand up.
Yeah, I just have two, two questions. One, now, my presumption is, or I, I got the impression that the hours are going to go into the business plan, is that correct?
The hours should be in
Yeah, they should be in there.
They weren't in, so perhaps you could update it, yeah, I, that's a good point, Charlene, I did not see them in there.
Okay, we could send that over.
Sure.
Great.
Secondly, I still see the flatbed trucks there.
Their, their term ends in two weeks.
End of the month.
End of the month, they're all out.
Yeah, they bought that property, we were talking to the owner today, actually, he's moving his trucks over behind sales, but that's another thing.
Anything else, Charlene?
That's it.
Janet, maybe when the, the business plan is being updated, if the applicant could also offer hours of operation for the yoga studio, if it's not already included?
That would be great. And, and I think, I mean, one of the confusions is sort of the, the special events piece, I'm wondering if you
Guys, we're trying to become the heart and soul of our community.
Right.
We're former athletes as well, so that's a big part of this, that we would love to share with a bunch of people. You know,
It's just going to be an event here and there.
Parents, parents of the kids playing.
Stuff we kind of already do.
Yeah, we do it here at the gym, and people love it.
Yeah, I think the gym actually
We have another location to do it, you know, like it's
I think the gym probably has a little more space and less you know, you know, less residential, residential people right around it, but I, I don't, I don't know, so that's, again, I do think
Space we're allotted is the parking spaces we have, you know, we're not, not allowed to park anywhere else, so.
Pretty much spot on with parking in both places, it's the same amount.
Are these going to be special events outside?
No.
They're going to be
In our footprint.
I see that there's a
Hey, I just want to, I, I don't mean to jump in, but I think Charlene's question is, the special events, are they going to be outdoor events, or are they going to be within the, within the premises, and are they going to fall outside of the normal hours of business? That, I think that's the question.
Yeah, they're on our property, it's, I don't know, I don't know how to answer that.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, are you guys expecting people to party on the lawn? Is that what you guys are asking?
Question is, is everybody going to be inside, or are they going to be outside?
I mean, on the deck, and Yeah, what we can have as a business, you know, that's the purpose of the deck. But there's 10 seats out there, so it's not like we're going to fit 100 people there.
Right, but as, what about like the parking lots, the lawns, so you're kind of thinking that everything is going to be as it normally would be within the confines of the building and the deck and
Yeah.
And in the parking, yeah, okay.
You know, we don't want people out on the lawn, man, that's, that's just crazy. I live 150 feet away from that, it's the last thing I want.
I think that was just important to clarify. Yeah, okay.
And will those be in, in the, at the same, at the same time that you're open, or will these be on other hours?
Yeah, yoga
Like, we do a football thing once a year, we are going to have a Christmas tree lighting once a year, I mean
Does the yoga go into the evenings, Gaz or John, for the evening hours?
For one thing, I mean
I mean, if we do a annual Christmas lighting, we're kind of open, have a
Guys, this isn't an event every Friday, this is maybe four times a year we do something, this is like big events, you know?
Big fundraising events with a booster club, you know, we fundraise a lot for the booster club. I'm confused in like what you, what you guys are asking, like
Well, can I just jump in here, because in my, in many situations like this, where there's a seating capacity and a parking capacity that's established on the drawing, any events that go beyond that require special permits.
Then hey, yeah.
So be it.
It's true, it's true, and, and as I said, I cited houses of worship. When they have special events, they have to go get a special permit. And, you know, if the traffic demands it
Rome, whatever you need, we will do.
Yeah, well guys, whatever you guys need, to kind of like, if we ever decide to have an event, and like, let's say we have 50 people registered, and we only have 36 seats, we'll apply for a special permit, if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
Great, okay, so thank you for, for saying that. Again, if there's any other questions or comments, please raise your Zoom hand, and we will, we should see that. I did see a comment in the chat that asked if the pizza oven would happen. And I will say that the building inspector memo indicated that that would not be in conformance with the zoning.
That's correct.
Okay, um, another, another chat, hang on. Okay, um, so I guess if there's, if there's no more comments, should, does anyone feel we should close the public hearing at this point, and would make a motion to that effect? Go ahead Bruce, you have to unmute. You have to unmute.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
And so, may, motion made by Bruce, seconded by Charlene, any further discussion on this?
I just want to clarify that if the public hearing is going to close, we will still have an updated business plan submitted by the applicant?
Yes.
That's only a time thing, that's only hours thing, correct, Judson?
I think maybe the other thing, it did mention you did mention some special events, and perhaps to say that, update that to clarify that you would be willing to get a special, a special permit for those
Sure.
Those events, and add that. And, and I think perhaps we should also say that we're willing to take written comments for a bit if we close the public hearing?
With, I would suggest a 10-day period.
10 days, all right. And so, I guess I, is that an amendment to the motion, Judd, or can we just kind of say that and still close the public hearing?
I would ask that someone amend the, the motion to, to close subject to a 10-day written comment period.
Okay, Bruce.
I will amend the motion that we close the public hearing with a 10-day comment period in writing.
Right, and, and the expectation of an updated business plan?
Correct.
Okay, and Charlene, will you second that again? I see her nodding her head, okay. Any further discussion on this?
No.
Okay, then I will pull the board. As I look around for people, Charlene?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
Greg?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I'll also say aye, so we have closed the public hearing. I think, however, while we do have a resolution, I would, I would like to, I think we've heard some things that, that say that perhaps the resolution needs to get updated, and we should ask for, for the next meeting. In particular, as I read the resolution, it references outdoor, some of the comments about the outdoor zoning in 2016. And I think maybe we should should make explicit one of the comments in there, which is no music outdoors. I think I think this comment about the, the special events requiring a permit, perhaps that can get added to the resolution as well. And we could see that for the next, the next meeting, oh, go ahead Jerome.
Well, I wanted to ask Stephen Helms' question regarding what was brought up about the entrance and egress onto Route 35. Since it does bottle down, is there any reason why that curb cut couldn't be widened, it would require permission from DOT, but it seems to me that your answer begs further investigation, since you say it widens, but then next down at the entry, which creates a bottleneck and a potential for danger. Is there any reason why that couldn't be physically widened? Well, with one car coming in and out, is that safer than two cars trying to come in and out? If one car taking a left, one car taking a right, it may control itself, so have to give that a little thought. It's been like that for many years, we did talk about making it one-way traffic coming in North Salem and looping through the property, and going out, either turning left or right, onto 35. But I believe your board would prefer to keep it the way it is. But that gets involved with the state and the highway widening, I just don't know if that's moving in favor.
I would suggest that we leave that up to our planning consultant and and the engineer for the property to determine whether that's safe egress and egress for, for two cars, but it did come up, and I wanted to make sure it was considered as during this period of
Right, so Jerome, I, I know you just said leave it to, to Yan, but I'm, I'm going to jump in and say I, I do have concerns about people trying to turn across traffic to enter there. So I would maybe think, I'm sorry, let me just finish, so I would think maybe it would be wise or, or ask people to look at maybe making that exit only there. And then you could come in or go out both on, on North Salem Road, but maybe just exit there, that would, that would say you didn't have to do a curb cut. People who came out, and especially were turning right as they exit, that might be easier. But then it, it wouldn't have a potential bottleneck of somebody, you know, stuck on 35 trying to get in while somebody's trying to exit.
That was our thinking at the get-go, where the traffic light controls the certain, you know, the traffic light, you can take a left on North Salem at a green light, go into the property and exit, so I don't, Kaz and John, would you object to a one-way at, at that entrance off 35?
We went in with originally, and then you guys told, told us to keep it the way it is.
Yeah, I think what we didn't want was all of the exiting to only go that way, I think if
That's fine.
Oh, that's, that's a good point.
You guys had, originally you had a one-way traffic pattern through the site. It wasn't the same thing as the
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I get, understood, so we could go in and out off North Salem, but just exit out onto 35, that's the latest.
I think that changed, sure.
If, if, again, I'll, I'll defer to, to the, you know, to Yan and, and to Stephen about that, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense.
Okay. The other thing that has come up, as we just discussed here, is whether we wanted to do like a what I'm going to say is a renewable special permit, where we have a chance to look at the conditions after maybe a couple of years of, of experience, and say, is there, you know, were we too strict? Is there something that can leave, do we need to fine tune something? What is the board's sense on that, would we want to see that in a resolution?
Just explain that a little further, Jen.
Sure, what we've done in, and I think I think Jerome mentioned the, the religious entity on 123. We had an initial special permit with conditions, and we said it's renewable after, I think it was two years. And we saw what happened, so they, for example, had to do traffic counts, not And we saw what happened. So they, for example, had to do traffic counts, not traffic counts, parking counts. And when we realized that there really wasn't any problem with big parking overloads there, after two years, we said, okay, drop it. No more parking counts. So I'm wondering if, if there are, you know, maybe we will say either there's something we need to do, and I don't know what that is, or something we can remove. You know, this, maybe the special permit for special events condition or something. So I'm just saying if we had a, you know, it's, it's initially, it's an initial two-year period renewable after two years. That would give us a chance to look and may, and maybe be a little bit wiser after some experience on this.
Actually, that would help us with DOT. You know, traffic counts would help us with DOT if in fact we have to ask them for some alteration of the, either the timing of the lights or widening of the roads. So would, would be helpful, a special permit because, and asking for traffic counts and things that you'd look at in a traffic study. So yeah, I, I would, I would think that would be very useful.
Like, hey, let's play, let's play worst case scenario here. In two years, you know, Sp, you guys want us, I'm, I'm confused in what you guys are saying. What, in two years, you're going to say we can no longer operate?
I don't think that's the intent, but in two years, in two years, we might say.
Scenario. Let's play worst case scenario. Let's play, I, I live my life by playing worst case scenario and then I judge if it's worth me doing that. Let's play worst case scenario. Two years, you're like, what, we can't operate? If so, like, what's, what, what's the worst case scenario to get that happen? That's kind of what I'm like confused with this special permit.
Yeah.
Makes us a little uncomfortable as business owners in this town if this is what's going to go on.
You know, like, I don't want two years to come up and we're really popular and all of a sudden now we have to close down.
No, I, okay, I, I certainly understand that and I don't think that's our, that certainly wouldn't be my intention.
Maybe, maybe the easier approach is to actually get DOT to get sidewalks and crosswalks and get the Cross River Hamlet with crosswalks and sidewalks.
Yeah.
Easier for everyone.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, but you guys don't want to wait until that happens to, to operate your thing and, and neither just the town, the town, I think this would be something that the town wants to see happen. It's just how do we make it safe? How do we make sure that it's not intrusive? And I'm sorry, I see Jerome has your hand, you have your hand up.
Well, no, I, you know, I admire you guys and your entrepreneurial spirit and your love of the town and wanting to do it. But let's, let's take a worst case scenario.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, worst case scenario is you guys win the lottery and you decide to move to Las Vegas. You sell the building, you sell the building, you make a nice profit. Somebody comes in and he wants to sell soda and soft drinks and hot dogs or that are, whatever, no hot dog, but sodas and affordable, affordable items. And we got kids screaming, streaming across there. You're gone. When we approve this, it's not, it's not, we're approving a use and a building that's going to be permanent. You may not be.
So Jerome, I, let me butt in, I'm on my
No, hold on, hold on. So you just have to understand that what we're doing, we, we're here for the town for the long haul. You guys say you are, but you know, you're, you're what, in your thirties? You might want to leave next year.
You're thirty-one years, baby, come on.
Okay, so that's, but I'm giving you, I'm giving you the worst case, which also I think tells you that we as a planning board are responsible to the community to create facilities that, that work and are safe from, in all, in all regards. And we're, you're creating an attractive, an attraction that's, you know, attract high school kids and whatnot without giving them a fair shot at getting there. So that's, that's my concern and I'm, I'm not sure if the rest of the board feels that way. I heard some other people in the community that are enthusiastic about it, but they're not really focusing, you know, and they're not going thirty or forty feet off the ground and looking down and seeing, hey, this could be a problem.
But Jerome, just, you have to understand the special permit, you know, unlike a, unlike say a, a variance or something that runs with the land.
Right.
It's, it's applicant specific, so there's concern that it could be transportable and someone else comes in. It is not a concern. I mean, if you, if you're worried about taking a look at this after a few years, you know, I, I think that's one scenario that
Are, are we suggesting that, that we want these guys to make an application for a special permit to the planning board?
Yes, well, so my understanding is it is a special permit that they have to get to open this, to have
But that's not something that's applied to us, is it?
Oh, yeah.
At the building department?
No, it's a, the, the use, Greg, is a, a special permit use because they're over ten seats. They require a special use permit.
So every time they want to do that, they have to come back to us?
No, no, well, it could be handled one of two ways. They can get a special use permit, permit now and, and that would be it. And so long as they continue to operate under the guidelines of the conditions of the special permit, they don't come back. But they are before you for a special use permit, so, so they need one, because of the number of seats. What is being, I think, discussed is a provision in, in the special use permit that would require them to come back in two years to kind of re-review the application. And that's, it is something you've done in the past for other applicants. It's not always done. I can remember the one case that, that Jerome mentioned on one twenty-three for, for the religious use, and then you've done it for, for cell tower uses before. But that, it's not mandatory. It's just if you felt that you needed to see this after they're operating for a couple of years to make sure there was no impact, then, then you could institute that type of condition, but it's, it's not something that is, you know, that you have to do. It's not a requirement. That would, that would be something that the planning board would impose in a condition of the special permit for the, the cafe in the outdoor seating area.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
So I'm, I'm familiar with the reservations on both sides. And I feel that it's entirely reasonable to expect an applicant like Scaz and John to have some reservations about proceeding when an application could be re-reviewed from the get-go again. I want to say this to them. They can't be denied that which is provided for in the ordinance as, as of right use. If you meet special permit parameters, you, you can't be denied it, that use. So in that regard, you have the assurance that that which you started with can be continued. However, if the conditions upon which it has been, was issued are not, no longer being met, then that's a problem. I'm remembering that Scaz said in the original, I believe in the original presentation of this, that they were going to have an ongoing dialogue with DOT. And they hope that they would get support from the surrounding community, maybe the school even, about providing a, a better means of crossing at that intersection. And I think that's key to a, to a lot of concerns. But like, it's like the chicken and the egg. You don't know which you're going, which, you can make one come first. I think the DOT needs to know that there's something there. There's a viable operation there that needs their attention. And you're much more likely to get it that way than you are on, on, by being speculative.
Okay, so I think that we have, we have kind of gotten to where we can here. We've, we've given some guidelines to Yan to update the, the resolution. I think we can have a fuller discussion of that next time. We will see if there are any more comments that come in written in the next ten days. And we will look for an update to the, to the business plan and we'll, I think, unless there's anything else from the, the board at this point, I think we should move on.
Well, I just, it's quickly.
Go ahead, Jerome.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I agree with Bruce and I, I also see the downside to recommending that kind of approach. And if, if Yan is correct in that, if the conditions of the special use permit that are spelled out in the business plan, et cetera, are not adhered to, that there is some other mechanism through the building department to address that, then I'm happy with, with that and would drop any request for any kind of special review. But I would like to have clarification on, on that from
That, that, that's what, that's what I thought that we were talking about, Jerome, that if, if there's an, an event that came up down the road, that they have to go to the building department for some sort of
Well, not just the event, Greg, but there are a lot of assertions being made here about occupancy, hours of operation and and more
Right, and they're saying that there may be three or four times a year when they would go outside their parameters, or the parameters that we're listing.
Right. So if that's the case, then, then I'm okay, you know, but I'm talking about the, the, not just the special events, but the daily use.
If we find
There'd be, Jerome, could I, maybe I could
Yeah, jump in there.
You would typically have, and you know, we, we drafted a resolution. Not sure if the applicant seen it, but there's, there are certain operational conditions that are associated with, with the draft that they would have to continue to abide by, or else they'd be in default of their special permit. Most of them, you know, kind of are in line with the special provisions for the use in the zoning code, so with regards to hours of operation, the number of seats. There was a concern about the overnight parking of commercial trailers. We've discussed that, so that, that's a condition. You can build in operational conditions that are you know, reasonable to reduce impacts. That's what special permits are all about. And if they don't abide by them, then they could be, you know, it could be enforced by the building department, you know, things like hours of operations, things like that, number of seats, that type of thing. We, I have seen special permits have notification requirements for special events where you don't necessarily get a permit. You don't have to get on an agenda to a, a planning board to get a special permit for the special event, but I think we've, we've done it for, maybe it was the Befford Autobahn, that if they had an event that exceeded their normal occupancy, they had to notify the chief of police, the fire department, you know, whomever appropriate. So everybody was kind of on alert that you know, something different's going to be going on here on this particular day. And it's more of a notification.
Yeah.
That's an option as well.
Well, an example, an example that comes to mind is the the restaurant on one twenty-three where they wanted to increase their deck seating. And we, there were conditions apply incorporated that dealt with sound, acoustics, smoking, all kinds of things that we felt, but ultimately a bottom line is in my mind, who's monitoring that? And we, we set up to the neighbors to complain to the building department before any kind of correction or
Yeah, the building inspector is not always there. So a lot of times it comes down to complaints. If somebody, you know, if there's ongoing issues, they say, hey, is this permissible? The building official looks at the resolution and the code and says, makes a determination, and then there's a potential action, but you know, a lot of, and it may be helpful at some point for just, I can go over, you know, the conditions that are already built into the code, because I just simply referenced the code sections and the resolution and said, you know, subject to the conditions of two twenty dash forty-three. Well, there's ten conditions in there and it has to do with hours of operation, number of seats, no amplification of music, you know. There's a lot of stuff that's already built into the code that's built into this resolution that should safeguard the community.
Yan, there, there may be two issues here. One, it's not really as a matter of the code that I, I think that Janet was talking about or I'm talking about. It's the traffic issue. And that is unknown. And that, that, that's it's an unknown. You can't, you can't do it through the resolution. And that's the portion that maybe should be looked at in two years. Not to take away their business, but in fact, to help them grow their business. So maybe we can use anything we get from that to Secondly, can we incorporate the business plan into the resolution?
That's already, that's already incorporated. If it's not, it should be. I, I believe it is. And, you know, obviously, we're going to see an updated business plan. I would suggest just maybe to if you're, if you, if the board doesn't entertain having some sort of condition that requires the applicant to come back to be specific in that condition as to what you're going to look at, so that the applicant knows that they will have an approval that will stand the test of time and you can't take it away from them. So maybe it's something like traffic and pedestrian safety will be reevaluated in two years. Maybe that's the condition. So that, you know, they don't feel like they could have the carpet pulled out from underneath them if they, you know.
I, I do not believe that.
Question. John and I have lived here our whole lives. Last thing we want to see is create a mess, right? We, we're going to do the best we can to make sure that this place is safe. Right? We believe because of our price point, that we're not going to have freshmen and sophomores walk over. And at the same time, those freshmen and sophomores are coming here at the gym between two forty-five and, and four o'clock. Right? So it's a catch twenty-two. Are you going to come hang out with me and John and work out? Or are you going to go to a cafe that we're not even there on a daily basis? So I, this whole traffic thing, I don't know, like, you're making it seem like we're going to get flooded with middle schools. That's the whole purpose of the gym. You know, we have people who walk up from the middle school here to the gym. I think you're going to get juniors and seniors come up top, park their car. Right? The majority of the young kids are going to stay here, you know, like
And there shouldn't be any problem, no.
This is our, this is our third meeting and we've talked about the same trafficking for three meetings. I just wish we knew earlier we could handle this. You know, like, it's just another month that's killing us.
Right. So again, I think we're going over the same things. Let me just try to, to say, I think, I think we can just, we can ask Yan to write the memo for next, the next meeting and we can discuss some of the nuances there. I do agree that, I mean, you just mentioned juniors and seniors, I'm sorry, you just mentioned juniors and seniors parking your car there. I mean, that would be a horrible thing if all, if they came in at at eight o'clock in the morning and left it there until, until four thirty.
No, 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 no.
When they drive and park there.
After school, if they come get a coffee, no, no.
Right, right. Okay, got it. But I'm, but this is, this is exactly, we don't know what's going to happen. So I think it's the intent. The intent is
What's another month going to do? What are you going to know in another month that we can't help now?
I think we're going to be in the same place.
Like a month's going to go by and what? We're just going to come up with a magic number and say there's a hundred people coming there a day? Like, ah, this is what we're lost about that. What's another month going to satisfy?
I think what we have is a resolution that we would like some amendments to. So and it's very difficult to do amendments on the fly.
Like, if this is for the whole special permitting use, let's just remove that now. We don't have to do any of that. We won't do a Christmas tree lighting. We won't do any of that. That's not a, that's not a problem at all.
Like, we had the business plan this whole time. Like, I just I think Other month wasted. We're spending money left and right, architect fees, these fees, like
You know, it's going to take time to get product, you know, just to build the place.
I understand.
We're on a very, very anxious
We don't have an option to not, I, I don't believe the board, or at least I'm not ready to sign the resolution, to approve the resolution tonight. And I'm, I'm, my, my sense of at least some of the board is that that is not something we're ready to call.
Nor, nor can you at this point. The public hearing's been closed, but there's a ten-day comment period, so.
So we will
What information do you want us to provide for you guys? So we know.
Know everything. We'd love to handle all of this next month.
Okay. We can't, we will not be able to do it tonight, right? So just leave that. But I think the things we want, updated business plan that includes the hours for both the and, and if you don't know if it's going to be six thirty to four thirty or six to four, make it six to four thirty. I mean, and that gives you whatever coverage you want. We want the hours for the yoga studio if they're going to be different. I think what we heard is that I think I think Yan's suggestion of notification of special events, so that when something, when something happens outside of your these hours, people are aware, and we're not going to get complaints or confusion about it. And that might actually help you advertise it, because presumably, that would be something that would be picked up by papers or some other notification. And I think that the comment about notifying, but not requiring a special permit of some sort would be would be good.
So we don't have to do anything for that, that just has to be it that you guys handle that?
Yeah, if I could just interrupt. Yeah. To answer your question, yeah, I think what you need, what you guys owe the board for next month is just the business plan. With the hours of operation for both uses, I would build in there that, you know, to the extent that you have special events that they're going to be within the confines of the building and on your deck, we discussed that. Other than that, I think the remainder of it is provisions that are going to be built into the resolution.
What about modifying the site plan for egress?
Yeah, the egress, yeah, if I think if you accompany that with a new site plan from Mr. Helms that just shows the exit only to thirty-five. And, you know, we can always provide that as an addition as well, you know, that the the site plan be modified to show this. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you guys want to have a, you know, a call or something, just go over.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely going to want a call.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will see you next.
Have a great night.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. And I want to thank everybody for their contributions and help as we as we kind of worked our way through that, and and I think better understood the concerns of the public. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a subdivision. It's calendar number oh three dash thirteen PB and calendar number oh three dash one six WP. This is the Silver Mine Preserve at Silver Mine Drive in Lockwood Road. It's an application for subdivision wetland activity and stormwater permits for the construction of a thirteen lot subdivision. And so I thought I saw Jerry on for that, or?
I'm here.
And and Ed, and I think, well, okay, maybe Jerry, take it away if you're the.
Thanks very much. Jerry Tortorella from Hockerman Tortorella and Wexton, and we're counsel for the applicant. You already identified Ed Delaney from Bibbo Associates, who's the engineering firm, and Eric Moss on behalf of the applicant is here this evening with us. We were last before the board in November of two thousand and twenty-one, and at that time, we had a discussion of a variety of different topics with the board. And the review memo that was issued by the town planner and the consulting engineer had pointed out some updates that we needed to make to our plans. If you remember, we had actually originally not had the these are two parcels that are part of the subdivision now. Originally, we only had the one larger parcel. And and when we joined the two parcels, added a parcel and joined them together in the subdivision, not all of the plans had been updated, so we were asking plans to make sure that everything coincided, which we've done, which Bibbo Associates has done. And so the submission that was made to you for this meeting doesn't really, does not have any substantive changes reflected in it. It's really a matter of housekeeping, cleaning up, updating the SWIP for the project. We also had provided you with a copy of a letter, a second copy of a letter that the Westchester Land Trust has submitted to the board in February of this year, and I was remiss in not pointing out that Brendan Murphy from Westchester Land Trust is also here this evening. I mean, he's not here on behalf of the applicant, but as you know, the Westchester Land Trust is the intended recipient of the dedication of the open space that's part of this subdivision. So Mr. Murphy is here as well if you have questions about their submission. When we were with the board in November, we discussed a number of different things, including that the applicant had always anticipated that the open space that was being dedicated to the Westchester Land Trust would qualify for and meet its obligations for setting aside parkland under the conservation subdivision or cluster development ordinance in the town, and that's section two twenty eighty-eight of the town code, as well as the subdivision regulations provision, that's one ninety-five twenty-six of the town code. It it's came out in the course of that discussion that I don't know that the we really had had a lot of substantive communication with the board about it. I mean, it was our assumption that that was what was going to happen. We made and we explained to the board the reasons why we thought that was the appropriate way to treat the parkland. And, you know, the board said that it would consider it further and asked us to actually confer with the Westchester Land Trust to reaffirm its interest and willingness to accept dedication and to make that a parcel that would be available for public use, active public use, as opposed to just some preserve that would not be utilized by anyone. I I hope most of you know, and if you don't, let me state it on the record, but the property is already considered to be public property by a lot of people in the vicinity around the property. It's used quite heavily by the public. People walk on it, they walk their dogs on it, they ride motorized vehicles on it. I mean, Mr. Moss has had quite a time trying to, you know, contain some some of the uses of the property by the general public. The letter that the land trust submitted did reaffirm to the board its commitment to accepting dedication and to providing public access, proper public access to the property. Presumably, you know, hopefully, and and specifically in the form of of a public trail system, a hiking trail system. I mean, there's no intent to have any motorized vehicles be able to use the site or horses or bikes. It's not really suitable for that purpose, but they really are expecting that there will be a trail system that will be developed on the property. In its letter, the land trust does mention to the board, it really does not want to see any specific trail layout imposed on the on on the property at this juncture. The land trust really wants to take the time to make sure that the trail is laid out in a way that makes sense, both physically and with respect to the conservation values that that are important on the property and kind of to augment the beauty of the property and people experiencing that beauty when they actually use the property. I think that letter estimated, though, that they thought there might be an ability to develop, you know, somewhere between one to two acres of trail system. And, you know, an effort, I think they indicate will be made to make a connection to Silver Mine Road, although, you know, there's no promise or assurance. And again, that's going to be a factor based on, I think, topographical conditions. There's a wetland system up by that Silver Mine Road, so, you know, all of those things have to go into the equation of how it gets laid out, and the land trust, and I've worked with the land trust on other projects, so it's got quite a bit of experience in in establishing the trails and and really wants to be careful about it. That said, though, when when the land trust did originally commit to accepting dedication, it did go through an exercise of laying out some trails on the property for the purpose of confirming that trails could be laid out on the property, right, and not not that, you know, there was there was a concern, or we wanted to make sure that the record was clear that the property was not simply discarded excess acreage that had no utility or value for recreational purposes. So, you know, we're here this evening. I think we've done everything that we needed to do. You know, we're ready to move to the next stage of get final approval. Our client's eager and interested in being able to build out the subdivision. At, you know, as as you think about the open space issue and its its qualification for and its satisfaction of the the parkland reservation requirements under the code, I I do want to point out to you that it's about forty point eight acres of a fifty-five, almost fifty-six acre site, so we're talking about over seventy percent of the site is going to be set aside as open space and, you know, utilized for that purpose. It will be publicly available under the subdivision regulations. I think in the R two acre district, I think the recommendation is that the set aside of parkland be seven percent or, you know, over seventy percent, so we're far in excess of any requirement of the code, and I think the land, you know, we've demonstrated that the land is suitable for the intended purpose, can be made available for public use and, you know, meets the the letter and the intent of the land set aside for recreation purpose regulations. You should know also that our client, besides building the access road, which will provide access to that hiking area and that open space, is also constructing a small parking area that's shown on some of the improvement plans. So, you know, our client is doing a lot to be able to contribute to and make sure that that open space does become actively used trail system for the for the Westchester Land Trust purposes, and then, of course, for the town's benefit and for the general public's benefit. And, you know, and the land trust, I think in the letter has pointed out to you that there's a requirement that there be an endowment that's established by anyone who donates land to them, so in addition to doing that construction work and and other kind of physical improvements to facilitate the use of the property for recreation land, our client is also required to make a financial contribution to the land trust, a fairly substantial one. So with all of those things in mind, I ask you to keep those things, take them under consideration, and I think we meet the standards for for the land to be satisfying that set aside for recreation purposes. And in fact, I think we exceed them, but I just wanted to make sure that I refresh the board's recollection about that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you for that. I guess. I certainly do think that the recreation fee was one of the the items that we felt that we needed to address, and this, you know, your your comments certainly are things that we will take into consideration. I also had some questions, I guess, on on, it was actually in the November submission or the October submission for the November meeting. We had some discussions about some of the easement documents and or the things that would come into easement documents and be included, and I think some of the questions were addressed by getting the SWIP in place. I am not quite sure. We we, I think, if I remember correctly, we agreed that that we didn't need to see the details of those at this point, but I wondered if there were any changes or any updates to any of those items. I think in particular, there was a question about Clues' responsibility it was to maintain and or replace the fire department tank. It looked like it was given to the fire department to do, and I had a question about that. I don't, I think there were a couple other questions, and I apologize that they don't pop to mind, but I wondered if there were any updates on any of that besides the the items addressed in the SWIP. I think that did that one of the questions was about the maintenance of the of the of the stormwater things, and I think that that came in the SWIP.
So there's been no change to the the kind of the conceptual description or the outline of the easements, covenants, and restrictions that we submitted to the board for the for the November meeting. I we have not had any further conversations with the fire department about the maintenance of the tank. I mean, it's always been our expectation, since we're paying for installing it and we're you know, paying to get it ready to be used, it would be appropriate for the fire department to do its maintenance. I mean, they know better than we do in terms of of what needs to be done to make sure that that tank has the available supply it needs when when and if, you know, it ever needs to be put in operation.
That that, Jerry, I think is probably the only item that I have a comment on. What we've, and this could be spelled out in a in a future condition, but I'll just tell you how it's been written in the past is that, you know, that really is that obligation's on the applicant, that the the fire department will have the ability to utilize it and and train on it. But the maintenance is really on typically on the owner and the HOA.
And any potential future replacement, if it.
Right, yeah.
If it degrades in some way, or somebody, you know, snowplow takes out the.
I mean, if they're
hydrant.
The the fire department uses the water for a training exercise or for a fire, they're going to replace the water that's in the tank, right? But if the tank springs a leak, the HOA has to fix it. That's typically how we we've written. We've done a bunch of them. It's it's always the maintenance obligation. With the exception of the the water in the tank is typically on on the owner.
Okay, I I don't know that, I I know, I don't believe, I fully appreciated that. I don't know if if Eric did, and there are other partners involved, so we'll have to go back and talk about that. All I say to you, though, is if that's a requirement, all the more reason that imposing the recreation fee on us is really not appropriate or or easy for us to swallow, because, you know, that's not a small obligation. I mean, that's an obligation we are going to have to pass on to the to the HOA. So that's going to be the homeowner's responsibility to do that. And we just need to look into what it means in terms of, you know, annual costs. I I just have no idea of order of magnitude of anything of that nature, or even what maintenance is required.
I think it's very similar to your your, the rest of your infrastructure, your roads, your curbs, your stormwater. I mean, it's it's not uncommon for the fire service protections to be borne on the homeowners association.
Well, that's how.
Yeah, and not the volunteer fire department.
Yeah, and and I I understand your point that it's another expense, but I would separate that from the rec fee because it doesn't have much to do with recreation. It has something to do with the infrastructure, as as Yan just indicated. My other question, I guess, on the Westchester Land Trust memo, I think, and I understand there are no guarantees, and thank you, Brendan, for joining us. I I think one of the concerns I had was that you know, quite appropriately, there are are comments in there about, well, it depends on staffing and funding and topography and everything else, but I would just make make the comment that we really would like to see a trail system in there and feel that, I think today, people cut through all the way from Silver Mine through to Lockwood, and certainly would hope that there would be a way to make sure that that continues, I think, a commitment. And and I recognize staff shortage, I recognize, you know, everything, but but the you know, saying you want to do something and saying that it will be done are two different statements, and I'm just going to leave it there. It it isn't as forceful a statement of intent as I might hope for. Okay, I should see, does anyone else on the board have any comments about the what we've seen here?
Right, Dan, I agree with you as to the letter being a little amorphous. It seems to me, an endowment was stated that it's going to be given, we don't know how much or when it's going to be given. How, you know, and and the parameters of the endowment. Also, it's unclear, as as you said, as to the trail ending and where it would end, and would it be able to get through the property? This seems to me, this is a conservation easement. And I believe that the taxes are sort of taken away from full property because of that, so there is a benefit to the applicant in my eyes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Judd, that the conservation easement is usually considered a benefit to the applicant, obviously to the greater public, but much of it is land that they cannot use in any case.
Well, I mean, surely, yeah, that that's that that's dependent on the particular application and, you know, the particular piece of property, and I I don't think that blanket statement can be made. on the particular application and, you know, the particular piece of property, and I I don't think that blanket statement can be made. And from, yeah.
Well, I let me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it okay if I speak or Jerome?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, sorry, Jerome. So I wanted two comments about kind of that that benefit issue. You know, this is, this is not, certainly not a situation where we get any sort of tax deduction. You know, it is, it is a requirement of an approval, and for that reason, it's it's, in essence, a quid pro quo, and you wouldn't, we wouldn't get that benefit in this instance. In terms of tax assessment, you know, I think that area, once it's owned by a not-for-profit, it will be taxed differently. But but the town will also have 13 nicely developed residential parcels that will generate much more in real estate taxes than than you're realizing now. And you know, the the whole idea of this being a conservation subdivision was was, did not originate with our client. It originated, and and I'm not bashing the CAC, Jen, so please don't take it this way, but it and maybe you you'll be happy about it because you really were the impetus behind it. The the CAC, back in 2005, we have memos that go back that far, the CAC really pushed for this subdivision to be a conservation subdivision very hard. And when our client finally, you know, bent to that and and agreed to do it, the idea was that the open space would be owned by the HOA so that it would be for the benefit of the homeowners in the in the subdivision. And again, we met incredible resistance to that concept. And and there was a strong push, and I think it came from CAC, I think it may have come somewhat from the town board. You know, there was an open space committee at the time that really wanted to kind of expand the trail network, is my recollection. And and we were urged very strongly to go find kind of a a land steward to take that property over, which is what led to us having the conversations with the Westchester Land Trust. And we we had those discussions. The Westchester Land Trust was very gracious and agreed to work with us. But, you know, it it has conditions on which it can take and accept the dedication of land. But it too saw a lot of value in in the in conserving that land and that preserve and and thought it was worthwhile, both in terms of the network it would create and it would provide a nice opportunity for a trail system. And so it was willing to get involved. And I mean, it even had people who, I don't even know how, you know, this is a long time ago, Brendan, I'm not even sure where you were in your career, you might have been in, you know, in elementary or middle school. But, you know, Dave Emerson, I remember, came to the meetings and and, you know, explained the support and and stated the support of the Westchester Land Trust for the open space piece. You know, in our client's view, if we didn't, weren't forced to do a conservation subdivision, we'd have much larger lots. Right? And and that, there's a value to us to having much larger lots, and we would not be having the public trading behind those, you know, those residential lots. And those actually, those two factors, smaller lots and public access to that open space actually has, I I think, a negative effect on property values for the applicant. So, you know, I want you to keep that in mind as well. I mean, this is, this is not one of those situations where, you know, we had this crap leftover land that we can't do anything with, and we just want to dump it on someone else, and hey, the land trust was foolish enough to say it'll take it. That that's not the fact pattern here.
Jerome, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, Jerome.
I'm not sure why, thank you, Jerry, for the clarifications of both times you spoke. But I'm not sure why we're taking this much time to to retrace the steps and the decisions that were made by a previous planning board. It so happens that I was on that planning board. I'm not sure if you were, Greg, when this was approved. But one of the actions that we did was to make sure to 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 see the maximum number of lots that would fit on that property, and that's the number that's currently on the balance of the land that's not being used for the conservation easement. So, Charlene, there's no, there's no bonuses here to the as a matter of fact, as Jerry said, lots might have been more desirable or higher price point sale if they were the larger lots. So clearly, the conservation or the conservation cluster development favors the open space and the benefit to the town in terms of potential trails and and which are being used now, by the way. So, and I do feel that it's passive recreation and should qualify for, it's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, for recreation recreation use. And I would not want to put an additional requirements on on this applicant for recreational use. And by the way, Delaney, who's sitting here, was on the open space committee at the time that this this property was being considered for for that purpose. So there's a lot of history here, and it's rare that a planning board contemporary contemporaneously questions the decisions made by a prior board. And I'm not sure why, what are we here for tonight? Is it just to discuss recreational fee or in lieu of fee? Or is there any other approval that we're looking for tonight?
Well, I think there were, that came up because we haven't really asked Jan to go through his memo, but I think that was one of the comments in the memo. And I think it was proactively addressed by the the applicant as they brought this in. So maybe, Jan, were there other aspects in the
The the reason, it's it's on the agenda because the applicant has made an application for final subdivision approval. And the board had issued a preliminary subdivision approval and a NECDAC in 2017. And there was a conditions associated with that resolution, and the applicant's been working towards addressing them. Our memo identifies a few that remain open. At the last meeting, the board re-referred the application to the building department for zoning review and fire code review. I know Joe NGLO is actively working on that. I know he's been in touch with the applicant's engineer on that. We don't have his memo, but I believe we'll have it very soon. The the rec fee or, you know, the how you're going to handle the the recreational component is an open item that you continue to address. The applicant submitted its full SWIP based on the new project plans. We did a full analysis of that. We don't have any any technical comments on it. We had one comment on on the notice of intent, but not really a big deal. There's a couple of conditions, conditions five and eight of the preliminary resolution that have not been addressed. Number five is just addressing the subdivision plot itself and removing some items from, the plot consists of two sheets. And sheet one, the preliminary resolution asked for certain things to be removed to improve clarity. That has not been done. Condition eight is, you'll remember that it's part of the preliminary resolution, the board wanted to wanted to address the stormwater runoff coming from the terminus of Silver Mine driving onto the subject property. And the applicant had committed to handling that via a stormwater practice on their property that would that would take the water coming off Silver Mine. And the preliminary resolution identified that that engineering practice or that stormwater practice be fully engineered. That has not been done. And then there's some, you know, minor things like signature blocks and things of that nature. Our office did review the construction cost estimates. There was one provided on the infrastructure and another provided on the landscaping and wetland mitigation. We had no comments on the landscaping and wetland mitigation. It was right on the money. The engineering cost estimate for infrastructure, we did have some comments, and we will be sending edits to Bibbo's associates under separate cover. It's probably going to go out tomorrow. So, you know, I think that, you know, there was a number of items that needed to be addressed tonight. I think we're in really good shape. The SWIP is in good shape. The plans are in very good shape. Couple of minor items that have to get flushed out, they could probably become conditions of a future resolution if you wanted to. I don't, wouldn't have any objection to that. I'd like to see how the applicant's going to handle Silver Mine Drive. But even that could probably become a condition. I'm not leaving anything out. The, you know, getting another letter from the building department, just because, you know, it was last before them in 2016, I think, you know, just helps the record. I don't think there's going to be any issues from what I understand from talking to Joe. So it was just kind of buttoning things up and, you know, at the last meeting, the board did ask us to start preparing a resolution. We have, it's not ready to be distributed because we had some of these open items, but it it can be. If you're ready to move in that direction, we could have it available, you know, for you at at the next meeting if you wanted. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, and I think the other, the other item that perhaps we should visit is whether or not we want to have a public hearing. I think we discussed this in November and at that point felt that we did not want a public hearing. Again, I'm as I think about this, you know, that was again another six months ago, so whether with the passage of time and hearing about, I think there's a lot more public awareness about activities going on. I want, also, that's another thing that we could could say, do we, while I wouldn't expect major changes, there might be comments about the the, you know, the walking path or the the hiking path, hiking trails, there might be comments. I don't know on what. So I'm going to that would be another thing that we might want to discuss, whether we wanted to have revisit even the idea of a public hearing on that. It was a split vote when we when we voted last time.
Jen?
Yes.
I I remember Greg made the suggestion that maybe we should. And in retrospect, I really actually agree with him, and I would be in favor of a public hearing. Because this has been a very long, now I'm hearing the history and maybe I just jumped to a conclusion. And Jerome, I wasn't questioning the decision that the board made. I was just to make sure that those trails are done and how it was envisioned to have those trails done, because I think they really are special. So I would, I would vote, if if there is going to be a vote, I would vote for a public hearing.
Well, are we calling for a motion? Reconsider?
Sure, if that, if you would like to make one.
Sure, I'll make a motion to reconsider and put put to a vote whether we should have a public hearing on this issue.
Second.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how we, so that's a motion to have another vote, or is that a motion to say we want to have a public hearing?
Well, if it's possible to do that, that's the way we would do it. Good. I mean, do we have to, do we have to
Yeah, to 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 rescind and to
Right.
and to provide for a public hearing.
Right, okay, that's, that's, yes.
That's the motion you're making.
That's the motion I would be making, yes.
Okay. And, okay.
Can can I be heard?
Yes, of course, Jerry. So, I just
when we had this discussion, I I know we had it in November, and and I know it wasn't a unanimous decision. But my recollection is that one of the reasons that the decision was that there wouldn't be much accomplished with the public hearing is because our final plat and our preliminary plat are very similar. So there's really, I mean, there's no, no area or room for change. I mean, well, what will, what will a public hearing result in? Because you're not, I've got an approved preliminary plat, I have a right to go forward with that plat. We're not going to be changing that, and we haven't changed it in the final.
Yeah, I think that's a slippery slope to say that, oh, what what's going to change?
Okay, Jerome.
Well, I'm going to speak to the motion.
Yes.
That was made and seconded, and similar to what Jerry just said, I I I was going to come up with that comment as well, that if there were any changes at all, if there were anything that was of substance, I would say, yeah, let's let's review it again. But since there isn't, I don't see the point. I mean, yeah, there may be some new people that moved on the block, so to speak, that didn't see the original proposal. But, you know, I think we've evaluated that. We've evaluated public opinion. We've brought, we've taken those comments and incorporated them into the plan, whether it was headlights at the at the coming in and out of that exit drive on the house or plantings and walkways and drainage. I don't see where anything has changed, and I think it's just a waste of our time, the applicant's money, and I just feel like it's, it's uncalled for. In the case of Mercedes-Benz, when they, there was delay and they came back, they had substantial changes. We had to have another another hearing, a public hearing, and it was justified. But here's a case where I, and I'm not sure, I know the delay so far has been on the applicant in terms of finance and all of the other things that that go on. But I'm not sure that that's sufficient enough to well, anyway, you heard what I said. I I I'm against it.
Okay, to be there has been some, I think, small changes in that we have had the addition of the other parcel and the modification of the the mitigation plan, which I think has only improved because of that parcel and the ability to move out of the wetland a little, but but it is but it has been a while since we've had.
It's just my my, my opinion, and I feel strongly about it, so but let's have the vote and go for it.
Any other discussion by, any other comments by anybody on the Okay, then with that, I will ask people to, I will pull the board. So, Charlene?
Hi.
Jerome?
No.
Bruce? You're muted.
Hey.
Greg?
Yes.
And I'm going to say yes as well. I I I do feel, I went back and read the minutes from the last time. I reconsidered what Greg said. I did look again at Jerome's comments, but I I feel that a public hearing would be appropriate. I don't expect major changes, but I want to make sure that the public feels that they have the right to be heard. Okay, so we would we are in a little bit of a situation in that I believe at this point we will have to meet in in public sessions, but there is a chance that there could be an extension of the executive order that would allow us to meet virtually, so that that public notice will have to be carefully crafted, and I'll ask Judd to help with that.
Yeah, the 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 governor extended the state of emergency through the 14th of June, so that actually falls before our June meeting. But in the event it's extended again, there is the prospect the meeting could be virtual. We can work that out in terms of the public hearing notice, but it sounds like we're setting this for the June meeting one way or another, correct?
That's what I would like to see, yeah.
So we Kirsten and I can work with Jerry and the applicant in terms of preparing the requisite notice. But I'm also hearing that Jan is to work on the approving resolution so that that can be ready for June and discussion at that time.
Yes, I mean, I'm assuming we'll have the the building inspector memo by that point and you know, we can perhaps wrap all this up in June.
Is there a way to make sure that you have that memo? Because that referral went back, went out in November of 2021. Yeah, I mean, we'll follow up again, but if you could just, you know, impress upon the building inspector the need to have that. I mean, we'll follow up again, but if you could just, you know, impress upon the building inspector the need to have that, we would appreciate that.
I think he's very aware. Thank you though. Okay, thanks.
Now, uh, before you move, uh, onto the next item, just in preparing the resolution, the one thing I heard, uh, that I don't really have clarity on is, is the, the timing of when the trails would be expected to be installed. Is it going to be left open-ended? Are going to be, um, you know, prior to the issuance of the last CO that there's going to be a trail system? A certain period of time. I mean, especially I think as the board deliberates on, on the rec fee, I think imperative that those trails be in place for that to really constitute open space and recreation. So what would be like a reasonable amount of time? I guess this is a question for the applicant and maybe the land trust as to when the town could expect that those trails would be installed and open to the public.
So I think one of the questions, I mean, you gave a couple of alternatives. Could it be before the last house gets a CO? Could it be before, uh, within, you know, two years of the start of construction? I, I don't know what, what things you might want to look at, but
And I can, I could leave that open in the resolution, but I, you know, I could leave a blank, but I think that, you know, the board and the applicant should just give that some thought between now and June, if, as to when you think that should be done.
Yeah. So I'd ask the applicant to give us their sense of, of a, uh, a, a condition that, or a timeline that they feel would be appropriate. I'm sorry, my clock is going off.
I mean, I, we really need to consult with the land trust about that and we couldn't make that decision in a vacuum. So let us talk to the land trust about it.
Yes. Yeah, that was my intent. So if you could have that as part of the information for our next meeting, that would be very helpful. And we could make sure at that point that, um, if, you know, the board, the board discusses it and can, uh, insert it into, insert that or some, some, some conditions similar into the, um, into the resolution. Or defer it for another month.
Okay. Um, so let us start. I mean, I, I think Brendan needs to consult with people, the land trust as well. So I don't think anybody's prepared to answer that tonight, but we'll talk further with them. And, you know, part, I mean, part of it's going to depend on, on when this gets approved because the land trust is, you know, already doing its planning, I think, for twenty, you know, for 2023. So it's, it's fully committed to, to its activities in 2022. So let us discuss that and, and hopefully you can get you some more, uh, constructive information on that.
That would be very helpful. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Jan, for bringing that up. Okay. Anything else? Thank you all. Um, we're going to move on to wetland permit reviews, the next item on our agenda.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you. If everybody's okay.
Thank you.
Bye. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 11 dash 22 WP. This is the Hard Art Garage on 12 Gilbert Street in South Salem is the application for garage, um, and I'm not sure who is on for the applicant here.
Uh, I'm, uh, Frank is here and, uh, I'm here with, uh, Paul Dennis, the architect.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm looking for Paul.
Yes. Oh.
Looking on the same screen.
Right there, on the same screen. Okay, good.
He's right.
Okay, um, why don't you tell us a little bit about the, um, application here?
Okay, yes, I'll do it. Um, this, um, uh, garage, it's an existing garage. It was built in, uh, 1926 and, um, it's built on, uh, on a concrete slab. It's about twen- twelve inches below, uh, ground level. So the garage floods and, uh, in the rain and in a moderate rain. So, um, it really can't be used as a garage or for storage. It's really, uh, not practical. It really needs to be rebuilt and, uh, because it's not possible to, um, raise the existing structure up because it's in, it's in pretty poor condition. So that's, um, I think it's, um, Mr. Hard, Mr. Mrs. Hard, I want to keep that garage. So we're, uh, rebuilding the garage and, um, on exactly the same footprint and, and location, um, as the present garage. And, um, so, um, the garage was, uh, probably built of, um, icebox storage. It's the property that used to be the original clubhouse for Lake Truismel. And, um, so it, it's, uh, so it was, um, it was built at the same time as the clubhouse was in, in 1926. Um, so, um, the existing slab is somewhat bigger than the garage itself, but it's underground so you don't see it. So, um, that, that slab will be removed and replaced by a proper thrusting. So, um, so it's really not going to be as much impervious, uh, surface there. So it, uh, the floor, um, has to be higher than the existing driveway. So that it, it, uh, no longer flush. That's the whole purpose of, uh, rebuilding the garage. And, um, so we, you know, designed the garage, uh, quite similar, except it's, um, uh, matching the existing house in, in style more. So it's going to be a little less utilitarian. I think blending better with the neighborhood. But, um, uh, also the existing, uh, garage has a, has a storage loft uh, above what would normally be the, uh, car storage area, which, um, the hard outs would like to, uh, go to a, a playroom and add, uh, dormers and small decks for their children because it would overlook the lake in its fabulous view. And, um, and then they also would like to build small, uh, roofs, walkways so that they can get from the garage to their house without getting wet when it's raining and things like that. So, so that, uh, uh, breezeway would, uh, add about 114 square feet in, uh, impervious coverage, which is pretty minor in the grand scheme of things. And, but, um, so we're not going to change the existing grade, just raise the floor of the garage. And, um, and we're not going to import any fill. So that's really, uh, what the, the extent that we're here is rebuilding the garage. But they also want to reuse the, the old boathouse door that faces the lake, which is really, is a really attractive, uh, overhead door, really, an old one. Uh, they want to keep that in, uh, in the new garage because it just, uh, it's historic and it really reflects back to the, uh, early days of, uh, the lake community. So that, that's really the extent of the work. I did get, uh, memorandum from, memorandum from, uh, from Jan, which I've responded to. And, uh, we'd like to move, move forward. And, uh, so, um, I think that's, uh, that's the, that's the job. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And, and it was helpful to get your comments, um, so quickly that did indicate that it is, because it wasn't clear to me at least, that it was on the same footprint, um, that was helpful to see. Um, Jan, do perhaps you want to, um, review your memo on this?
Sure. We didn't have a tremendous number of comments, um, and understanding the, the net increase in impervious cover of just being over a hundred square feet, is, is one of the questions that we had asked and, um, was really going to help us make a determination as to whether there's any sort of stormwater management requirement or wetland mitigation. And typically as a rule of thumb, we use 300 square feet as a threshold to start looking at stormwater. So, um, I don't think there's anything from my standpoint, um, that would be needed. Uh, we'd like to see the, the septic shown on the plan that they are proposing of a full bathroom on the second floor of the garage. Will be a connection to the septic system. Um, I don't see any way that they're going to, you know, view this as a bedroom. There's no kitchen up there. So I don't think they're going to have any reason to go to the health department, but we should know where their septic is. And to the extent it's anywhere near construction, it should be cordoned off during construction. Now, there should be some, um, erosion sediment controls shown on the plan, things of that nature. Um, I don't expect they'll go over the 5,000 square foot threshold for a stormwater permit, but we'd like that calculation shown on the plan so we can determine that it's not required. Um, and then we just asked that I go to the, the planning board or to the building inspector for zoning review. So, um, I, I don't, unless the planning board feels otherwise, I don't see a real need for mitigation. It's a, it's a real, uh, replacement of the garage. I've been on the property for prior applications, um, over the years. The breezeway, you know, is really insignificant. So.
Yeah. And then putting, um, the deck on doesn't, doesn't add anything, right? So it's, it's, so, okay, um, so I think first I would look for consensus to refer this to the building inspector. So can I see thumbs up? Ready? One, two. Bruce, you okay? Charlene, okay? Okay, um, so, um, Kirsten, we would like to refer this to the building inspector for, um, zoning compliance. I, yes, go ahead, Jerome.
I, I would move that, uh, we move this to an administrative review since there's no mitigation requirement and it's, uh, if the building department's okay with it, then I don't think we need to see it again.
Um, I don't anticipate any problem from the building inspector, but, um, maybe, Jan, would you be okay taking it with the recognition that if there is something that comes from the building inspector, it comes back to us or?
Yeah, fine. But we, we work in concert, um, and in tandem. So I don't see any issue there. And wetland permits don't get issued until they, they get issued with the building permit. So they wouldn't, they'll, they'll go in hand in hand. If there's any sort of zoning issue, I'll know about it and I could advise the board.
Okay. So we have a motion to, uh, move this administrative. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Greg seconds. Um, any further discussion on this? Okay, I'll pull the board. Jerome.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Uh, Greg.
Yes.
Um, and Charlene.
Hi.
And I also say, hi. So, um, okay. So we anticipate that this will move forward, um, without coming back to us. But obviously if there is a, a issue that's identified by the building inspector, we may get to see you guys again. But other than that, um, uh, thank you, Jan, for taking it and, and thank you for, uh, waiting through until 10 o'clock to have this covered. So thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 15 dash 22 WP, calendar number 07 dash 22 SW. This is the Reenie Vangal residence. Um, 15 Benedict Road, South Salem, New York. And this is an application for a garage cabana, pool and patio. Um, and Michael, you're on.
Good evening. I'm here for James and Elizabeth. Um, they're the homeowners. The applicants are before your board tonight requesting a wetland activity permit uh, for their home at 15 Benedict Road, uh, which does not have a garage. And essentially they wish to garage, uh, their two cars in essentially the same location or place where their current outdoor parking area is located. Uh, this wetland permit application includes also a pool for this young family to enjoy. Uh, the proposed accessory building, uh, is designed, we'll hear from the architect in a few minutes, uh, to be a multi-purpose structure. The front or westerly portion of, of the structure is a two-car garage. Uh, the rear, on the rear side, backside of the, of the structure that faces the pool, uh, will contain the cabana amenities, including a changing room with a half bathroom, uh, a pool kitchenette and a wet bar that, that have doors that open wide to the pool. So it's kind of an, almost an outdoor feel for those amenities. And then above the, the, the two-car garage is an open recreation room, um, on the second story. Uh, James and Elizabeth have assembled a terrific design team, uh, who are with us tonight. Uh, Kenneth Anderson is the principal architect at Granoff Associates. And he has designed this multi-function, uh, structure and the pool and also the landscape features, including the patio around the pool, the outdoor seating, uh, and the landscaping. And I'll call upon Kenon very shortly, because I know it's getting late, to describe his site plan and his building design and ask him to explain why, after exploring other potential locations, uh, for the building and the pool, that these are the only practical rooms. Uh, our design team also includes Alan Pilch. I'm getting an echo now. I don't know why. Uh, Alan Pilch is familiar to board members. And Alan will address his mitigation measures being proposed, his erosion control and sediment control, uh, measures in the stormwater management plan. Uh, as Alan will explain, uh, in greater detail, the Waukeahuck River is located on the neighbor's property to the immediate west. Uh, and the wetland buffer, the 150-foot buffer extends not only beyond the current house and driveway and basically all the improvements, but it also extends, uh, uh, to where we're proposing the garage and the, and the pool. And so before I turn it over to Ken, we have reviewed Jan's, uh, 513 memo. And we know that, that Ken and, and Alan have work to do and we're confident that we can make the case that one, impacts have been avoided to the extent possible. And, and secondly, the unavoidable impacts, uh, can be mitigated to, we believe the board's satisfaction. Uh, I would note that we're not overbuilding here. The, the proposed building coverage, uh, including our proposed new accessory building and pool will be 4.5% when 9% is allowed. So we're at 50% of maximum coverage at, on this 1.5 acre parcel. Um, and, and I'm going to turn over to Ken now, but I, I would throw it out that I think a site walk by your board uh, would be helpful. There's some unusual features, the Waukeahuck River, um, and the, and the configuration of this lot and the existing structures and driveway. And I think the board can better understand why Ken and Alan have settled on these proposed locations. Uh, if you, uh, come out and visit the site, uh, earlier in the process, I think you get a better idea than just seeing it by way of photographs. So with that introduction, Ken, can you take over and share your screen and show your, your site plan and your building drawings?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Michael, um, for that introduction. Sorry, board, I'm trying, there we go. Um, for some reason the cursor doesn't show up on my, on your Zoom screen, but can you see my screen, my screen now? Yeah. And the cursor. Okay. Yeah. It doesn't show up on the Zoom though. I don't know. Anyway, um, as Michael explained, this is a architectural site plan and, uh, just because it's easier to read what's happening with the buildings. I just want to give a brief summary of how we arrived at locating these. Um, the red line, uh, around the property are, are the setback lines. We, we, we wanted to stay within that. And the river, uh, setback is over here, uh, from what, that's the wetland setback. The river is actually further over. Um, and then if you can see the red here, let me zoom in a little bit. So this is the proposed, uh, two-car garage and the backside of it, as described by Michael, was, um, a cabana structure, which has doors that open up, uh, fully onto sort of a pergola area where, where the Reenies would like to put a future pool. Um, also this has a changing room and a bathroom here. It is detached, uh, from the structure, um, which exists from the main house. We're also adding a small mudroom, which the current house doesn't have. We're also adding a small mudroom, which the current house doesn't have, with a covered porch. And this sort of creates this connection spine between the two structures. As Michael had stated, there is an existing parking lot in this area, and we're sort of putting all of our improvements mostly on, on top of that area. The, the Rinis did study, and, and we did as well, entertain putting the, the pool and the garage in different places on the property, and it just made sense to consolidate things around the existing house. They didn't want to have a remote pool and poolhouse, and they, they, the more we looked at it, it, it seemed to make more sense to have all these functions into one, one structure. So that's why we ended up with the, the poolhouse here. I can show you the floor plan briefly. There's that new front porch on the existing house, the new mudroom, and then it connects down through to the detached structure, which is a pool, bath, changing room. This pool kitchenette, which opens up with sliding doors to the, to the, the pool. And then here's the two-car garage. There's open stairs up that go to a second floor, which is, you know, an, an, an open area. Both, both our clients, Liz and James, work from home extensively, and they do have two young boys, so sort of being remote from the house is sometimes easier to do work. So they, they do a lot of that work from home over here. Or they will do that over there. Here's the elevations, the garage door side in relation to the existing house. And this is the pool side, as we were talking about. These are these sliding doors that open out onto the pool. And this is sort of the approach to the front of the house when you park. If I could just briefly share some photographs to sort of explain where this is going. The siding of the pool was really based on centering it on this existing gable, putting it across an area where there's an old well, where we know the excavation goes down and not, there's no rock in that area. And then this is sort of where the existing parking happens already on the property. And they just really want to enclose it to, to keep their cars out of the weather, especially in the winter months. So that just gives you an idea of siding, some other pictures of the site. This you can see is, is the river down below here. It's a dramatic gray drop just beyond the, the fence here. You can see a little bit of the neighbor's house down below on this side. And this is it looking from the front. This is where the garage would be and the pool, you know, would be out here. Different view. Here's from the front again, kind of where we want to put the garage. And I think I had you, the other, oh, here's the other neighbor, which is all the way over here. And there's a large buffer of woods between the two. The Rinis have explained this to those two neighbors I just showed you and the neighbor across the street, and they were in full support of them doing this project. And I believe there was a letter submitted to, to the board. That's just a brief introduction to it. I can hand it over to Alan if he would like to share some of the mitigation and the impacts that, that he'll be taking care of.
Good evening. Alan Pilch, LP engineer. I'm here with James in the same room. I'd just like to point out that, in addition, just to point out that wetlands are actually located to the west, where the Waukeahuck River is, on the north, which is actually where it appears that there's the, the DEC Wetland, L14 is located there, actually to the south of the property. And when you tabulate it all, of the 67,336 square foot property, all but 875 square feet of the property lies within the town's regulated buffer. So for avoidance, it's virtually impossible. There's just a small area on the eastern portion of the property that lies outside of the wetland buffer. Perhaps Ken, you could put up the site plan, if you'd be so kind, just to share that? Sorry, I'm not able to do that, but if you could just do that.
Yeah, sorry. When I do the share, I can't see my cursor, so it's hard to hit.
It's okay. I'm, I'm sorry, but it's life.
Never happened to me before.
Life with some Comcast issues tonight. We can blame.
I'm really guessing here where it is.
Okay, well, I'll just continue anyways.
Yeah.
At, at any rate, so as I said, all but 875 square feet of the property lies within the town's buffer. And as Ken pointed out, and actually Michael pointed out, we actually made strenuous efforts to really provide the homeowners with a multi-function building to really minimize to maximum extent the impacts in the buffer. Everything's very compacted into the, you know, the center of the property. As, as Ken pointed out, the proposed garage is located, actually go to the second sheet, that's also. That'd be fine. Go to the second sheet. Yeah, that's good. And, and, you know, it's all in the, you know, very much in the central portion of the property where the garage is. And as you know, it's over the footprint of the existing parking area on the property, you know. So as a change of land use, it's going from, you know, parking area into, you know, proposed garage cabana building, you know, to, you know, and, and the idea of combining them also into one structure helps minimize the overall impacts of what can occur. I'd also like to point out, to further minimize the impacts, on the south side of the house, there's an existing driveway, which used to go to some, like probably a one-car garage, but that garage no longer exists. So what I'm proposing to do is physically remove that entire segment of driveway, you know, to really, and that's all within the 100-foot buffer, well, 150-foot buffer, which you can see on the right side. I'm pointing to it, but nobody can see it. But that's the dash line that runs off the property and on the right-hand side. So with that, it helps really reduce the amount of, of, you know, impervious surfaces on the property. Helps, you know, keep the numbers down as best we could, but also point out that that portion of the impervious surface that is there actually drains into the wetlands associated with the Waukeahuck River. And so that's an important reduction to incorporate. With regard to mitigation, you know, we had shown, we had submitted two exhibits, which showed that at the present time, there's 9,456 square feet of impervious surface. And yes, it does increase by about 10,000 square feet, you know, really due to, you know, accounting the pool and, you know, all the other surfaces that are there in the, and the garage cabana building. But as mitigation, what's being proposed is a significant planting area. Right now, most of that area is either just lawn or just, you know, not even brush. It's just like, it's very, you know, you know, kind of like very open wooded area. It's not even that. There's just like a sprinkling of trees through that whole area going up to the stone wall, which is in the northern portion of the property. What we're proposing to do there is to really supplement what's there that drains through the state wetlands to the north and into the Waukeahuck River by, you know, providing a significant wetland enhancement, wetland buffer enhancement. And the overall planting area is about 11,000 square feet, which is well in, in excess of the proposed, you know, the proposed increase in impervious surfaces in the buffer. And finally, I'd just like to point out, we're also proposing stormwater mitigation, which you can see in the sort of middle central portion of this site plan, where we have, you know, 30 Caltech 100 chambers to be installed. And, you know, the, the runoff from the, the new driveway and from the driveway, like garage apron in front of the proposed garage cabana building, and portions of the roof runoff will be conveyed first to a pretreatment facility, then into the chambers, then ultimately discharged into what is presently an open area where there'll be a level spreader, which will then discharge the treated runoff, whatever, whatever excess there may be, you know, after it infiltrates into the ground, to a level spreader, which will then just discharge across a wooded area into the, you know, into the wetlands associated with the Waukeahuck River. So there is a lot of mitigation proposed, both from a vantage point of stormwater, and does provide peak rate attenuation over the range of storms as required. And also, there's a, as pointed out on the plan, there's a significant wetland buffer mitigation that's being proposed to enhance what is presently a very sparse area or just is, you know, presently lawn. So that's the intent of the plan to mitigate impacts for what is being proposed. And with that, I'll turn it over back to Michael or back to you, Adam, Chair. If there are any questions.
Thank you. I do have one quick question, which I think is also a CAC question, but what, what type of pool is proposed? Is this chlorine, salt? What, what is proposed?
We, we honestly haven't gotten that far with it. I mean, because the initial request is that they really need to get the, the, the garage structure in. And because we were going to the board, we figured we'd show them exactly what this is. This might be a future permit. Currently, we, we are just proposing the porches, the mudroom addition and the, and the garage cabana structures, but i- is there, is there a preferred pool that you, you would like to see, or?
I think in general, from an environmental point of view, you know, basically salt never goes away. So if you have any kind of drawdowns, it is more problematic than, than chlorine, but you know, that's one of the things that would perhaps go into drawdown considerations or mitigation or anything. That's, I think that's a typical reason we ask it.
Okay.
I, I'll just point out too that there, there is, you know, from the pool equipment, we do show a PVC pipe which goes to the, to the proposed infiltration facility for the drawdown. It's on the plan too.
Yeah, but if it's.
I understand.
It's salt.
It's a salt, yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, whereas you can mitigate chlorine more easily. I, when I look at this proposal, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right, that. So you have a little sketch showing two cars sort of adjacent to the side of the house. That's also a new impervious area, is it not?
It, it sort of overlaps what's existing as the parking area. Part of that isn't new, but most of where we're proposing everything is already driveway.
Yeah, so it just seems like that could be a very easy way to get a little less impervious if somehow, I mean, I, I know you've got the.
Yeah, I mean, that could, you, we could pull, you mean, I don't know if my screen is still showing.
Yes, it is.
Like from here, we could pull that back more. The, the idea was that there would be a, you know, we didn't want to see garage doors when we came up. So there, there was a way to park into the garage here, and in the back of the garage was going to serve as the cabana. So we wanted a place for guests, delivery, you know, that kind of thing. But we could certainly, you know, talk to the Rinis about reducing this, yeah.
I, it's just, you know, with the, it just seems like with all of the impervious that's going on, and I understand, you know, patios make sense and walkways make sense, maybe that would be something that could be looked at.
Certainly, we'll look at it.
Yeah, I, I should see, actually, I'm gonna, are there any other questions before we maybe ask to stop screen sharing so we can see each other?
Well, again, it's the area in front of the garage. Is that a, a large concrete apron? Or there's a rectangle that shows 30 feet.
Yeah, that's, we, we were conscious of, you know, not going, we're trying to minimize the close proximity to the wetland, but, you know, 30 feet seem to us as a minimum to back out of a garage, you know, to turn around and get out of there. But yeah, that was, that was proposed as a, as an asphalt driveway.
Got it, okay.
Okay, any other? Actually, Jan, do you want to go through some of your comments on this?
Sure. As Alan mentioned, the wetlands regulated by both the Towne Lewis Row and, and the DEC. And the development is occurring within both regulated areas. They'll need a freshwater wetland permit from the DEC. They should make that application as soon as possible so we can start hearing their feedback. There is a flood plain on the property. So a flood plain development permit will be required. I believe that the, the home is outside of the boundary. But if, as soon as the boundary touches the property, that, that permit comes into play. That's issued by the building inspector. They'll require coverages under the Speedy's General Permit for Stormwater. And obviously, they're before your board for wetland permit and a town stormwater permit. Would recommend that they be referred to, to the building department for review. There's probably some additional architectural information that needs to be submitted before that referral takes place. I, I guess that our overall comment is, as Alan mentioned, there's 10,000 square feet of new impervious surface within the buffer. And that's with taking away a portion of the existing driveway. They're, they're compliant with the building coverage, but there's a lot of impervious cover within the buffer and in close proximity to the wetland. So our overarching comment was to try to reduce that. It sounds like you, you, you know, we're cognizant of that when putting together the plan, but there, there are large expanses of impervious cover within the buffer and it's, it's significant. The wetland mitigation plan, there, there was a conceptual mitigation plan provided that will need to be flushed out to demonstrate one-to-one mitigation. I will look for the wetland boundary to be verified by the DEC. Again, the 100-year flood plain should be shown on the plan, the base flood elevation illustrated. Our office will need to witness deep-in-park tests for the stormwater infiltration system. Question for the, for Alan. Do you see this going, or is there additional bedrooms proposed? Do you meet any criteria for going to the health department, any modifications to the septic system?
No, I can answer that. There, there's no additional bedrooms.
Right, there's no additional bedroom. We're very conscious of that.
And do you know anything about the existing septic system, the date of it, what it consists of, pumping history?
Pumping history, we can get from James.
Is there an expansion area on the, on the property?
Yeah, I believe so, yes, there is. It's all in the southeastern portion of the property where the septic system is.
So there's a designated expansion area provided?
Yeah, below that, you know, there, what's shown there is the gallery and 236 linear feet of sorthing branches. And below that is where the 100% expansion area is, that area there.
If you can box that out. Yeah, it's, we have to kind of get into the weeds on the application. I'd be happy to meet with the applicant during the course of review, but if there is ways to push some of the items further away from the wetland and try to reduce the amount of cover, look at materials that are pervious. There's just a lot happening on a. There's just a lot happening on a. Already developed site.
We're happy to look into all of that. In terms of the building department referral, that's fine. We have no objection, uh, but the board should know that the building inspector has already reviewed our plans and, and found it. Because uh we're trying to combine multiple uses in the single structure. Where we need a variance uh for the overall uh square footage of, of this new accessory building. And we're going to be before the zoning board next week on that. But we, we meet all, we meet all setbacks, so it's, there's, we don't need a setback variance, just a, you know, the.
Mike, I, I think it's, we need to get that letter. Um, from the building inspector, you know, I think typically. Um, and I think this has happened in a couple of cases now, um, that applicants are going to the Z B A before they come to the planning board. And there's not enough time for the planning board to vet these applications before you have your zoning variances in hand. Um, so I would, I would like this to. Be vetted by the board before you, you know, you prefer the E B A. We don't even have a, a, a referral letter into the building inspector. And it's ready before the Z B A.
Well, he issued a denial letter based on the size of the accessory buildings. But um, we have no problem with you asking him to look at whatever issues you're.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I would ask that the Z B A, the further their decision until this project get vetted. It's a little, you're kind of putting the cart before the horse here, in my opinion. A lot going on here and you're getting, walking to our next meeting with the variance in your hand.
I, I think they had the, based upon the denial, they had the, the perfect right and the board had jurisdiction to entertain.
They might have had the right, Michael, but you know that um, with all the cases you've had here in Lewisboro, that you typically bring the applications before the planning board. And I think on a couple of occasions now, you're, you're going to the Z B A way in advance.
Well, I, I'm not sure I know what instance you're talking about, but uh. Uh, we'll, we'll take it under consideration. I'll speak with, with James and Elizabeth.
Was there any, uh, since you've already had it reviewed, is there any, the, there's another cottage on the property? So does this become, is there also a requirement for a, um. Um, not a cottage, but a, a building of some sort up there, it says. So are these now two um, two buildings? Or is the other one too small to be considered? I, I, I mean, those are the kind of things that the building inspector would tell us.
Yeah, well, as you know, under Lewisboro code, there's no limit as to how many accessory buildings you can have on your property. So uh, there, there's no, he, he did not see that we needed a variance because there's an existing cottage building in the back.
What is the cottage? Is, is it used for uh, what's in there?
I, I believe it's a setup as a, as a one-bedroom. Uh, James, you want to chime in on this? I, I believe it's a one-bedroom uh cottage. It's been there. Predates their ownership.
The cottage, yes, has been there uh for a very long time and has a C O of, I believe nineteen forty-seven. It uh is an open kind of setup where there is a, a bathroom and a sink. Uh, not, not a full kitchen or anything like that. It's fallen on disrepair. Um, so right now it's currently being used as effectively a shed.
Sir, is there a separate septic system for that?
Yeah, there is.
We're not proposing to modify, you know, anything in the building right now.
Right, but you got a pool there, you got stormwater there. Where, where's the septic system?
It's right adjacent to the building.
Do you have it mapped out?
Uh, we'll show where it is.
Okay, um.
But it's, it's, the, the pool is well with it, was quite distant from the restrictive distances. And the infiltration system is, you know, quite distant from the, you know, the, the septic for that, uh, you know, for that building. So the, you know, it's well beyond the restrictive distances, but we'll show it on a plan.
Does it have a separate well?
No, the, the water, the water to the cottage is, is um off the main system, the, the primary well.
Primary wells to the east of the house.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, to the east of the house, I'm looking.
That, that's denoted on the plane there.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, so perhaps if you would stop screen sharing um for a moment. At least I can ask the um board for uh consensus to refer this to the building inspector. Um, just for a, you know, a, uh, so that we have a letter back that, that indicates what's going on. I think that would be helpful. So um, can I see by thumbs up if you agree to? Send it to the building inspector. Okay, so I see everybody. Um, so by consensus, we will refer this to building inspector. It may be very redundant. Um, uh, okay, um. One of the things that, that Michael suggested is that we consider a site plan for, a site plan visit. I believe that um, I know at least I saw it once before. But I think back when I was on the C A C, so it was a while ago, um, there was another application. That I think um came in initially and then never was pursued. Um, I know, I think the C A C memo said it was denied. But I, I think instead, I don't think it was denied or approved. It just kind of was one of those that never came back a second time.
The prior owners abandoned the project and sold the property.
Okay, so um, what do you think about a sidewalk? Is this a, something that you feel would be worthwhile seeing?
Yes.
Okay, Bruce, did, was that a want to speak or a, a yes, you want to see it?
Yes, I'd like to see it.
Okay, um, typically, uh, anybody, I mean, we've got a couple that, that say so. So um, Greg, what do you think?
Uh, if you want to set up a sidewalk, that's fine and I will try to attend if I'm available. Don't, don't go by me because I'm, my weekends are. No longer as free as they used to be.
Okay, um, so we typically do a sidewalk the um. Weekend before, I did not look up what the date was for this one. Um. Our next meeting is June twenty-first, so um. I don't see any big event on Saturday, the eighteenth. Would that be? Um, a date that other people could make and.
Yes.
All right, so um, I think, I think if we want to say again nine o'clock, does that work for people? And we would ask that the applicant kind of um stake out perhaps the edges of the. Proposed building um and anything else you think we need to see. Uh, you know, that maybe the, how far the uh, the pad in front of the garage goes. That, that turnaround area, um. Center line of the road up there, if it's not really pretty obvious where, where it goes, um, something like that. So we could have a sense of, of what this looks like.
Okay, we'll do. Can, can I just go back to, I, I think Jan and I have an honest uh disagreement on.
Well, at ten forty-eight, uh, Mike, why don't you do that privately?
Yeah, I just, uh, that the project revolves around this building and, and now uh, Alan and, and, and. Uh, the, and Ken are going to spend a lot of time and the client's money addressing all of your concerns, which we're happy to do. But only define later on, uh, three months down the road that the zoning board doesn't like our building. So I'm trying to protect my clients here. I want to know if we have a building that the zoning board is, is approving. And then we're happy to spend whatever time and money it takes to take care of the wetland mitigation issues. And so that, that's my thinking. I'm not trying to circumvent anything. I don't want the board to understand my thinking as, as a applicant's lawyer.
Yeah.
And Jan has, Jan has a good institutional argument that he makes. I'm trying to protect my client.
I think the, the strength of your uh argument is based on the fact that, as you initially opened. And said there was investigation for other locations, but this was thought to be the locate. And I, I concur, the impact on the site is already in this location. So it substantiates your, your action to go ahead with some assurance that the Z, that if the Z B A or that if we had comments. It wouldn't uh overturn the scheme entirely, but I still agree with, with Jan that the first step is to come here and then.
Well, we are here.
I see why you did it and I, I, I think you have a substantial uh case. I'm not an attorney.
Okay, um. So, um, I think what we, we have said that we will um send this to the building inspector. We have set a site plan. We will look at this. Um, you know, I mean, I think that. The danger is, is if we go out and say, and look at it and say. We would be much better there than here, or this is unacceptable to us than, than you've already been to the Z B A. But that, that's not, you know, I, I, I can't predict that that is going to happen or not happen.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not in a setback. It's a question, it's a pure size question. And if we have to go back to zoning board because of some action and some compromises made in front of your board, then we're prepared to do that.
Yeah, I, I understand. Okay, was there more? I don't, Jan, did you?
I said my piece, I did, I disagree for the record, but um, I've said what I've, it is a.
Okay, um, so we will um at, if there is no more submission. If there isn't any different submission by next um, by our June meeting, we will at a minimum have a sidewalk report for you.
Right.
Okay, thank you. We will see you then. We are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing that. Okay, the next um item on our agenda is a wetland violation. This is calendar number oh one dash twenty-one W V and this is Maple Tree Farm on four hundred Smith Ridge Road. Um. And I see, whoops, it's the squares move around. Um, I know the, the owner is on the. Um. Is on the call with us, so can you give us an update on what's happening?
Yes, how we doing? Sorry, Brian Cooney. Um. So we met with Jan back in November and uh then winter kind of hit hard. So we met with two engineering firms just recently um to go over the site plan remediation. Um, and we finally hired uh Joe Rena. And he, and this was only earlier this week, sorry for the delay. Um, but he's about six weeks out to come up with a plan. Um, but he also was explaining to us, he's like, at this point, all the ground is stable. We don't have any kind of like, um, you know, like steep slope. There's plenty of vegetation, there's not any, he's like, and as, as of now. If he comes up with something in about six weeks, I don't think we could really start planting or doing the remediations to the fall. Um. But we're working with that and in the meantime, we're going to get the wetlands permit going. And hopefully we get this wrapped up as soon as possible. But I, I mean, I know these engineers are super busy and they're really backed up, but we'll do it as quickly as we can. He says about six weeks from now, he should have a plan. And then within, you know, timely fashion, we'll get as much, we'll get as, everything done.
Okay, so would that be appropriate to say we'll see you at our August meeting or September meeting? So that we can get this done and you can get working, um, kind of maybe.
Well, we were shooting for August. I mean, it's up to you guys. Like I said, he, he, you know, he was. Pretty confident that everything all, like was growing and we weren't in a steep slope and everything looked good. So there's no rush, but I know they're very busy, but it's up, it's up to the boards. If you, you know, we could shoot for August or we could shoot for September, it's up to Jan, up to you guys.
Well, right, I, I mean, the, the permit application needs to get in as quickly.
Yeah, that we're going to do in the next few weeks, we'll get that.
Setting the date is simply a report back. Why don't, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we put it down for August?
Okay.
Yep, so the submission date before that would be July twenty-sixth, if you can get something in, so we'll look for that.
I, I, I wouldn't even be guided by the submission date. We, the, the wetland permit application should be submitted as soon as it can get in.
Okay.
That's it, but I'm also saying if we can. Well, um, we can make it a more substantive um thing if he can get more in. Okay, but we will, we will see you August uh sixteenth.
Okay, perfect, then we'll do that wetland permit as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
All right, guys, thanks.
Sorry to make you wait till late.
No worries. Good night.
Good night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is really correspondence. The town board has um referred to us a, a request for zoning change at nine, nineteen Mark Mead Road and Cross River. Um, and Michael, I'm assuming you're on.
Yeah, let me see if I can share my screen here. Can't seem to get to that. All right, so can you folks see? See that picture?
It was just a white, whiteboard.
Oh, okay. Let me, let me see if it, it comes up now. If, if it doesn't, oh, here we go, okay. Is that up?
Yes.
Okay, so this is uh coming out of the, the rear exit of Batio Tretoria. And uh, I, and we took the shot so that you can see that the driveway just across North Salem Road. Is almost directly in line with Batio. And, and as you remember, some of your board members who approve Batio, uh, the rear half of Batio is, is zoned residentially. For, and basically everything from the curb line you, you see to the south is, is zoned residential. Our one-half acre and, and then the, 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 the site that, the, the restaurant and the parking lot at Batio. Is, is retail business. So um, what is, what has been happening historically is. Um, particularly on busy Friday nights, Saturday nights, um, especially in the warmer months. When the outdoor uh seating, dining is in full swing. Um, patrons that pull in to the parking lot of Batio, if they find no available parking space. They then come up this exit ramp, make a quick left and then go into the property that you had before you earlier on tonight's agenda. Uh, Antonio uh Coppola had made an arrangement with the prior owners of that, of that A I A property. Now it's Borro Cafe or proposed to be Borro Cafe and Antonio had his overflow patrons uh parked there. Uh, during the busy dinner hours. Uh, he, uh, he, he, he made a play for that property to try to buy it. And it didn't pan out. And so he's trying to control his own destiny and he uh, here, and he now has this property. Nineteen Mark Mead Road under contract, subject to his ability to use the northerly. Seventy-five feet or so for parking. And so the idea would be to have this property split zone. Just like Batio is split zone, so that the, 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 the subtly edge of the curb line of the driveway. Into the existing driveway off of, off of North Salem Road on nineteen uh Mark Mead Road. Would, would be everything from there north to the A I A or the Borro Cafe would be uh rezoned retail business. But like we, uh, we did with the town. But like we uh we did with the town board, and I think your board was certainly involved in it down in Vista when we rezoned some property, we we limited it, the the uses within a retail business. Down there, it was limiting the uses within a general business, but the same concept here, all we want to do is is have the ability to to re, once this is rezoned, or at least the northerly half of this property is rezoned, to come back to your board with a site plan to put in some overflow parking uh in the northerly seventy-five feet. Basically, it'd be up against the AIA fence there, which you see on the far left side of this photograph over here is the AIA fence and and their their parking is just facing south, right against the other side of that fence. So this, from this curb line north, uh, we're we're ultimately, we want to use that for overflow parking. Uh, we petitioned the the town board for that uh to rezone or change, amend the zoning map to allow that. And that would give us the ability to come back to your board for the full site plan and, you know, landscape and design and buffers and screening and lighting and all of those kinds of things. Um, but that that's the idea. And then, of course, the town attorney referred our petition to your board for comments. I'll stop talking and answer any questions.
Okay, um, I think if you could stop sharing, um.
All right, let me get rid of this. Is that, did that do it?
It did it. Thank you. So, um. This is a little difficult in that um I think I think, I think I have no objection really to the substance of this, but but we're kind of talking about zoning and not talking about the the new use or the the new site plan. Um, so I I don't know, I'll I'll ask anybody on the board if they have any concerns about about saying this. I I would like to say, I would propose in the instant, in the uh interest of time that we say we have no objection, you know, to the substance of the change, but procedurally, we'd really prefer to see a coordinated review. And I hope that um, you know, if the board agrees, you would um delegate to me the the right to uh or the ability to send that letter to the town board um with obviously Judd's help and and Jan's help in um in drafting that.
Well, obviously, you'll do what you want to do, but uh we would, we we'd like you to give your general sense of whether you think parking, overflow parking in the northerly half of this site is is something that uh that the town board should consider. By the way, I have Antonio with me. I see he's on the Zoom. If you have any questions for him.
Right, I mean.
Do you have a site plan or something that you could show us where the parking would be?
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff DeRosa's crew was just out there yesterday. They're they're backlogged, so I'd hope to have something, but I don't tonight. But it's 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 the northerly, it's from the existing driveway north to the AIA property line.
It's hard to comment on something that you don't know. I, parking sounds like a good idea, but it's very general. I I the planning board usually deals with site plans, and you have something in front of you to say, oh, you think this is good, this is good. Uh, my feeling as a general rule, yeah, I I looking at the property and knowing the property, I think that it would work, but until we see something, it's hard to to make that statement. So I, you know.
We we have to come back to you with a site plan and go through the whole process, if if it's rezoned, or at least the northerly seventy-five feet are rezoned. That's all we're asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, I I would say that, you know, Bacio is certainly an asset. The the parking lot has, you know, it's not like the parking lot isn't kept neatly at their current place. But I feel conflicted because we're only asked to to really talk about the zoning change and we don't have a site plan, so um. So I I, go ahead, Jerome, get me out of this, and you're muted. You're muted.
Boy, three most frequent words used in the English language these days, you are muted. I don't think it's unreasonable for the board to add, town board to ask if that's an appropriate use or if we would agree based upon uh the parameters that we would apply to any site plan that's adjacent to a residential area. Maybe, and you could put that in the letter, you know, that, uh, you know, where what our concerns are and that we would address those concerns when a site plan is submitted. But certainly, having a uh a a letter that says we're in general uh in agreement with uh rezoning that for parking, I don't see the problem with that.
Now, the house is gonna remain our one half acre and and everything from the driveway south.
Yeah, I mean, so our job is to make sure that that house is not impacted adversely, that there's no negative environmental impact. But we know we can do that. We have the the methods and means to protect the lives. So if there's lighting, if there's fencing, buffering.
By the way, that's a legal two-family house. So it's an oddity for for Mark Mead Road.
But but I think, Janet, are you saying the concern you would voice is that from a procedural perspective that decision with regard to environmental impact should be done on a coordinated basis between the town board and the planning board with one of them you know, becoming the lead agency and making that determination?
Well.
That's the concern, right?
It's a, it's a secret concern, but I mean, is it required, uh, you know, I'm that's procedurally, that would be I think the cleaner thing to do. If the town board has has decided not to do it that way, then, I mean, I I certainly and so on the substance of the of the matter, I certainly think it makes a lot of sense. And I understand why a Bacio would look to do this. Um, it's, you know, it makes a lot of sense. It's procedurally slightly difficult, but the town board has has decided to approach that way, so I I I don't know how not to deal with it.
The the town attorney has advised the town board that it's an unlisted action. And uh and by the way, just to complete the story that about the two family, and Antonio uh if he acquires the property, if he gets the rezoning, he's gonna house some of his staff there. Important staff that have to travel great distances, so it's a win-win for him.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um. Well, I know it's late, so um is there, do we need a motion for this? Can we have general consensus to say that we are?
You'll need a motion. If you, if you're gonna draft a letter on behalf of the planning board in response to the referral, you'll need a motion.
Okay.
Authorizing you to do so and and given the parameters of what you're gonna say.
So I make a motion that we permit, that we authorize uh Chairwoman to draft a letter generally uh in accord with the rezoning for the purpose uh requested. Understanding that a site plan and that uh environmental impacts will be reviewed by the planning board.
Is that okay, Judd?
That's fine.
Do we have a second? Okay, Greg, um, any discussion on this? I'll poll the board. Um, Jerome.
Yes.
Bruce.
Hi.
Greg.
Yes.
Charlene. I see a nod, even though she's muted, and I also say aye. Um, so we are. Um, so thank you. We'll get that letter out promptly.
And thank you, thank you to board members, because I I made a special request that you each take a drive-by so you can see it and be in a better position tonight to discuss it. Thank you.
Janet.
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
Bruce, I I I, as I've been listening to this and 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 digesting what you're saying, Michael, I have a concern about patrons at a restaurant having to cross a road uh for parking. Um, I would be very interested in knowing how many parking spaces are set aside for employees uh with this current parking. I would not be opposed to employees parking on the other side of the road. But um I've, I'm familiar with at least one horror story of parking across the road uh for patrons at a restaurant.
That's a good point, Bruce. Uh, Antonio, though, has a has a safe history because he's been using the AIA property as overflow for years without incident, but you make a good point, and Antonio can control who, where his staff parks. And and uh we'd be happy to have that as part of the uh site plan approval that uh that employee parking occur on the, across the street and thereby reducing the number of patrons crossing the street.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Is, so I think that's um is unless there are any other comments, I think we're done with that. Um, I'd I'd look for approval of the minutes of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Charlene. Any discussion? Okay, I'll poll the board. Um, uh, Bruce.
Hi.
Greg.
Yes.
Uh, Charlene. She's nodding yes, and um Jerome, you weren't there.
I'm staying, yeah.
And I also say aye, so the uh minutes of April nineteenth are formally approved. Um, we are at our witching hour. We had um.
Yeah, I'm there.
We had, I think um uh Judd has suggested that we um make a motion to go into an executive session for the purposes of obtaining attorney advice.
My recommendation, given the hour, is that um any advice I was going to give, I'll synthesize into an email based on things we've heard this evening and get it out to the board. I think it's just more productive. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, and and if necessary, we can go into an executive session at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, um, so the next meeting date is June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Right now, we are planning that to be in person unless there is an like, an executive order or an extension of the emergency uh declaration that allows us to meet virtually, in which case um I believe we would all concur that we would prefer to meet virtually. Um, speak up if you disagree. Okay, so I'd look for a motion now to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Greg. Everybody seconds, okay. Um, I guess we will have Bruce speed in a second. Any discussion? Okay, um, I'll poll the board. Jerome.
Yes.
Bruce.
Hi.
Greg.
Yes.
And Charlene.
Hi.
And I also say aye, and I hope people voted because you can't vote after the meeting tonight at all. So um, thank you all, and we will see you uh in a month either, oh, no, we'll see you before that at the sidewalk.
Yeah, eighteenth.
Right, and then, okay, so.
Bye, all.
Good night.
Night.